Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside of the main entrance and at the podium rail to my left. Please give the card to city clerk. She sits right here in front of me. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Great. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by one of our special reverends in North Las Vegas, Reverend Ralph Williamson from the First American Methodist Episcopal Church. Following that, we have the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Colton Lavanger and Gage Paulson. Cub Scout Pack 911 Gold Crest of the LDS Ward, please rise.
Just for the record, First African Methodist Episcopal Church.
There was a typo on my paperwork.
No problem. Let us humble our hearts in prayer. Most gracious God, the Creator and Sustainer of life, we heartily beseech you, for these your civil servants, the mayor and council members of the city of North Las Vegas, may they always incline to your will and that you will guide them in their endeavors to manage the affairs of our city. Likewise, bless all who are set in authority over us, that they may be dedicated to the advancement of all whom they serve. Give them a vision for our city, a city of justice, where none shall prey on others, a city of plenty, where service and poverty shall cease to fester, a city of brotherhood, where all success shall be found on service, honor, and respect. Hear, O Lord, our prayer, and that all decisions will be decent and in order.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me read that one more time, Reverend. Williamson, the First African Methodist Episcopal Church. We just had a groundbreaking next door to their church. We're excited about the growth of that church in that area. Thank you for being with us this evening and blessing us. And thank you, Scouts, also. Tonight, we have Mayor Pro Tem Churchill will present a proclamation naming today as Volunteers in Police Service Day, and will present some certificates and appreciation to each and every one of these wonderful volunteers. Counsel, let's go down. And then after that, we have a special thing from Aaron Patty of our police department we'll make a presentation to.
Okay, let me first say thank you to all of our volunteers in police service sitting over here, all that we have that volunteered their time, as well as their families, to allow them to volunteer their time. And for our volunteers who couldn't make it here tonight, this is a tribute and a celebration to you as well. I tried to do my part tonight. I'm a VIPS myself. My wife is a VIPS, so she's representing me. But I tried to put as much red on as I can with our new uniforms. So, and I've been explaining to people all day that, yes, I know Valentine's Day is over. So, the VIPS program, in case you don't know it, is a very proactive approach to our police department getting into the community and serving the residents of North Las Vegas. It was started back in 2010 between myself and then Captain Frank DiMartino, and since then, it's been taking on a life of its own, thanks to all of our volunteers, because any one person could start something, but it takes a village, so to speak, to keep it working and growing. And I have to thank our council members, my council members, and of course, our police department for embracing this. And let me tell you a couple of things that the VIPS do, which is really unbelievable. We have modified police cars, so we do patrolling. And we're out there for four hours at a clip, you know, taking information and being the eyes and ears for our police department. But really, more importantly, and it's almost unbelievable when you think about it, for volunteers, people have worked their own lives, whole lives, and now retired, and now they're getting back into serving the community again. We have people on call 24 hours for 401s, which are accidents. And, you know, it's not uncommon for these men and women to get called in the middle of the night, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and then get dressed and go out, pick up a police car at the Northwest Area Command, and go to the accident scene. And to be out there many times, many, many hours, in the dark, in the cold, in the heat, and the purpose of that, of course, is to assist our police officers and allow them to get back to what they're doing so they can do their job, and we kind of backfill a little bit. So those are just some of the things. And of course, special events and all of that that were asked to do. And if it wasn't for all of these men and women, none of this would be happening. So I personally thank you. For me, it's a privilege to be part of working with all of you, even though I haven't been doing my part as well lately. So let me read this. This is from our council and our city. I'll do the whereas's, because now that I have you, it's over here, you're going to stay here and listen. Whereas the Volunteers in Police Service, VIPS, are a group of ordinary citizens, which I don't agree with, dedicated to extraordinary community service and public education through the North Las Vegas Police Department. And whereas the VIPS grew from Citizens Corps, which was created after 9/11 terrorist attack to coordinate volunteers and make communities safer, stronger, and better prepared to respond to emergencies. And whereas the VIPS are a trained and highly motivated force of volunteer civilians who perform non-hazardous police services of North Las Vegas, and their efforts contribute to a better quality of life and a safer and more secure community. And whereas the VIPS patrol businesses, parks, industrial centers, and neighborhoods, members are on 24/7 call, out of basis to control traffic, called out on basis to control traffic flow at crash scenes, enduring traffic light malfunctions, conduct property checks, monitor graffiti, and other neighborhood nuisances. And whereas VIPS volunteers also perform crowd control at special events to provide resources to citizens. And the last whereas, since the program's inception in 2010, the VIPS have worked about 35,000 hours, saving the city approximately $1,400, $1,400,000. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do proclaim February 21st, 2018, as Volunteers in Police Service Day in North Las Vegas, and urge all our citizens to join us in commending all of these volunteers for their time, service, and efforts to a betterment of our community. Thank you so much, guys. Who would like to come up? Mark, you're our coordinator.
Actually, I had a two-page speech to make, but Richard pretty much took care of it all. I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor, the council people, and police department that has helped us assist them. With permission, I'd like to tell a funny story, if I could. I was told not to, but I'm going to do it anyways. My wife always says I tell too many stories. We were at a 401, an accident over on Craig Road where we blocked off both sides going north and west, I'm sorry, going east and west. And as we were doing so, about an hour later, gentleman went around me with his car, through the barricades, over the medium strip, and towards the accident. I notified the officers. When he got there, the officer stopped him and arrested him for being drunk. A few minutes later, I hear from the other side, officer, VIPS person that was doing traffic violation on the other side, he was, not the same guy, or a different guy did the same thing to him, went around him, over the medium strip, and got stopped by the police officer and got arrested for DUI, driving while intoxicated. And I'd say about an hour later, car pulls up to me, gentleman says, "Look at that bar over there. I really need to get to that bar." I said, "Well, bar is right there by the accident, but if you really have to go there, go around the block, see the officer by Denny's, tell him you want to go to the bar." And he did what I told him, and he got arrested for DUI. Once again, I want to thank everybody.
I'm Captain Rob Hanks of the North Las Vegas Police Department. Councilman Churchill stole most of my thunder here, so I'm going to be somewhat brief. Our Volunteers in Police Services, otherwise known as VIPS, assisted in the traffic shooting that occurred on October the 1st. On October the 2nd, 2017, these volunteers donated several service hours at the convention center, where a staging area was set up for the victims' families. The task of the VIPS members consisted of parking lot security, traffic control for donations being delivered, assisting family members of the victims to the staging area, and mitigating media interest towards the family members. I'd like the following VIPS to step up, whether they call their name, please. Mark Clark? Easy step, easy step. Nikki Woolery? Malcolm Arnett? On behalf of Chief Alex Perez and the entire North Las Vegas Department family, I am honored to be a part of this presentation. Please give them a round of applause.
We had a special ribbon and bar that was made, this commendation bar that you can see that they're holding here. Let me just grab this. Just so you guys can see real quick, it says on it, "1 October 2017," with a '91 chip in the middle of it. It has white stripes and it's blue. That signifies purity and bravery. So this is something that our commendations committee come up with.
Councilmember Barone?
Everybody who was a responder for the 1-October incident, obviously, this was post in the
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, what I'd like to say, I know the VIPS guys aren't here, but it's been recorded for posterity, I just want to say the example of the VIPS volunteers, Mayor,
efforts that they helped in, but they received this ribbon. So this is a special recognition we definitely wanted to give to our VIPS members tonight.
that's, with all respect, that's community pride and community volunteerism at its very
And please give them another round of applause. They help us out so much.
finest. And I'm so happy to see that. Congratulations to our VIPS. Real fast, I guess for me, a couple weeks ago, I had the very unfortunate task of reporting that one of our instructors, a very beloved artist here in North Las Vegas, Roberto Rico, passed away a few weeks ago. We're going to be honoring him here at the Stone Soup Art Gallery, just outside, with a posthumous art reception and art gallery. And it's going to start, the reception will be on Friday, March 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, just right outside. Everyone's welcome to come by. I'm sponsoring the food, so please feel free to come by and bring bread. And if you know anybody, and of course, or if you happen to have some Roberto Rico's art, we're calling for people who own his art to please contact Ms. Jessica Kennedy. She says here to text her at 702-630-2333. And you can drop off, you can make arrangement with her, drop off Roberto Rico's artwork from now till Monday, the 5th, and it will be part of the art gallery display for this art show. Again, Jessica Kennedy at 702-630-2333. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Good report. Mayor Pro Tem Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lee and I had an opportunity to attend a press conference at the Grand Sawyer Building yesterday morning for what is called Marcy's Law. Our city was the first city to vote and support this initiative that was passed twice at the state legislature, and it's going to be put on a ballot here for people to vote on. Let me explain what Marcy's Law is very briefly. Marcy's Law is a victims' rights bill to protect the victims as much as the assailants or the, in this case, a stalker. And it comes from, goes back to California in 1983. Marcy's Law was named after Dr. Nicholas's sister, Marcelle. Nicholas, a beautiful, vibrant University of California, Santa Barbara student, who was stalked and killed by her ex-boyfriend in 1983. Once again, we're hoping that when this goes on the ballot for voting, that people will recognize it as being a very important issue to our victims here and give them as much rights as the defendants in cases as we go forward. So when it comes to voting, it'll be voting yes on question one, Marcy's Law. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Gwens Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Mayor Pro Tem and I attended the 7th Annual Chinese New Year in the Desert Celebration on Friday night at the Fashion Show Mall, which was quite an extravagant affair, celebrating the Chinese New Year. We got to witness some of their customs, serve a traditional Chinese meal, so it was really, really an enjoyable event. And I just want to say thank you to them for extending an invitation to us. And also, at our own Craig Ranch Regional Park, the China Lights Display is in its last week. I know they close on the 25th. If you have not gone to see that, you're missing something. It is truly amazing to see the light displays that are out there as you walk through the path through their, the Chinese New Year display out there at Craig Ranch. So I really, really urge you to go and participate in that. And a sport that's not extremely popular at schools in North Las Vegas is the lacrosse sporting, sports. And I know Canyon Springs has a pretty amazing lacrosse team, and it's getting lots of notoriety. Children that would not ordinarily participate in any type of sports have kind of gravitated to lacrosse because they find success in it, and that's leading into great success in the classroom as well. And a lot of kids from Canyon Springs and other schools that have a lacrosse team are actually getting scholarships to attend college. So we are going to see how we can work with that lacrosse team and grow lacrosse as a sport here in North Las Vegas. And one last thing, February 26th, and just in honor of Black History Month, the black elected officials in Las Vegas, the state, will be honoring Henderson's first African-American female police chief with just a welcome celebration. It's going to be held at the Urban Lounge. And the Urban Lounge, if you don't know, is owned by our own Senator Kelvin Atkinson, and it's on 107 East Charleston. And so it's just a small reception. It's open to the public, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Urban Lounge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to express a huge thank you to the 50-plus volunteers who joined me on February 10th. We had the opportunity on that beautiful morning to do a painting project at the Silver Mesa Recreation Center. We have a 3,000-square-foot modular building that has been installed in the back of the recreation center by our amazing city staff. And volunteers and myself had the opportunity to clean the inside, remove 1,500 square feet of old carpet, and paint the exterior. It's about 3,000 square feet, and we did it all in about four hours, and what I would call it a 50-footer. It looks amazing for 50 feet. If you, that was a joke. If you are in the service spirit and miss that opportunity, I'm helping coordinate another opportunity on March 3rd, Saturday morning, at the Goins Park on Washburn. It's near Washburn and Willis, in between Valley and Allen. We will be doing a park cleanup from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So come on out. All supplies will be provided. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Since we're going to go to Goins Park on Saturday, we might as well notify the crowd here that the former city councilman, Mr. Theron Goins, is sitting right over there. Appreciate having you here, and it's lovely to have a park named after you after all your many years of service. Thank you very much. Now is that time set aside for the first public forum on posted agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards? I have one. Mr. Burchard? Mr. Burchard? Did you have something on a posted agenda item?
Well, we wait till...
Well, you checked the first public forum. You don't want the first public forum, you want later. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to come down and talk to us on any posted agenda items? If not, we will close this public forum. Moving on to the agenda?
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda February 21, 2018, for possible action.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are several changes to tonight's agenda. The applicants for item three and four have requested that those items be withdrawn. And the applicant for item five requests that the item be continued to the March 21st, 2018 council meeting. And also to hear item 14 on tonight's agenda before, or item 15 before item 14 on tonight's agenda. Staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates?
Item two, set date on any appeals filed to require public hearings from the City Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I so direct you to set any dates as necessary.
Mayor so noted.
Moving on to public hearing, we are missing item three and four and five tonight because of the agenda change. We'll start on item number six.
Item six, approve UN 5717 La Madre and Lawrence Future Elementary School for applicant Clark County School District for special use permit in an R1, single-family, low-density district, and RE Ranch Estates District. Proposed rezoning to PSP, Public, Semi-Public District, to allow an elementary school located at the northwest corner of La Madre Way and Lawrence Street, APNs 12435714019 and 1243570304 and 005.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, were you going to start off, sir? Or you want to introduce your, I know, we all know Linda, so I thought we'd start with you, and have you introduce your speaker, maybe?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Linda Perry, 1180 Military Tribute Drive, representing the Clark County School District. I thought maybe I would have the architect lead off and show you what a lovely building we're going to place on the site and kind of go through some articulation of it. And then if you had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer for you.
Thank you, sir. Could you introduce yourself for the committee and for the record?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Onidi Omirba. I'm with TSK Architects, 314 South Water Street, Henderson, Nevada. What we have here is a proposed elementary school on East La Madre and Lawrence Street on the southeast corner. The proposed school is 8.6, the site is 8.6 acres. The building itself is 106,000 square feet. Is that visible? 106,000 square feet, housing 53 classrooms with windows, 849 students for this particular campus. The school itself is a single-story element and a two-story element. A single-story element is, consists of our administration area, multipurpose area, kindergarten area, and then classrooms. And then the second level is, also consists of classrooms in this area. The site itself, sorry, I should have finished off the site here. Site itself, 116 parking spaces. We are proposing a bus drop-off area on Herald Street, a parent drop-off area on Lawrence Street, detached sidewalk, street frontage, and all the landscaping required per the city of North Las Vegas. Our site has a botanical garden in this area right here, which is what we've been incorporating in a lot of the elementary schools, schools for the school district. Exterior of the building, building itself consists mostly of a masonry... Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Item two, set date on any appeals filed to require public hearings from the City Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I so direct you to set any dates as necessary.
Mayor so noted.
Moving on to public hearing. We are missing item three and four and five tonight because of the agenda change. We'll start on item number six.
Item six, approve UN 5717 La Madre and Lawrence Future Elementary School for applicant Clark County School District for special use permit in an R1, single-family, low-density district and RE Ranch Estates District. Propose rezoning to PSP, Public Semi-Public District, to allow an elementary school located at the northwest corner of La Madre Way and Lawrence Street, APNs 12435714019 and 1243570304 and 005.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, were you going to start off, sir? You want to introduce your, I know, we all know Linda, so I thought we'd start with you. And have you introduce your speaker, maybe?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Linda Perry, 1180 Military Tribute Drive, representing the Clark County School District. I thought maybe I would have the architect lead off and show you what a lovely building we're going to place on the site and kind of go through some articulation of it. And then if you had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer for you.
Thank you, sir. Could you introduce yourself for the committee and for the record?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name's Onidi Omirba. I'm with TSK Architects, 314 South Water Street, Henderson, Nevada. What we have here is a proposed elementary school on East La Madre and Lawrence Street on the southeast corner. The proposed school is 8.6, the site is 8.6 acres. The building itself is 106,000 square feet. Is that visible? 106,000 square feet, housing 53 classrooms with windows, 849 students for this particular campus. The school itself is a single-story element and a two-story element. A single-story element is, consists of our administration area, multipurpose area, kindergarten area, and then classrooms. And then the second level is, also consists of classrooms in this area. The site itself, sorry, I should have finished off the site here. Site itself, 116 parking spaces. We are proposing a bus drop-off area on Herald Street, a parent drop-off area on Lawrence Street, detached sidewalk, street frontage, and all the landscaping required per the city of North Las Vegas. Our site has a botanical garden in this area right here, which is what we've been incorporating in a lot of the elementary schools, schools for the school district. Exterior of the building, building itself consists mostly of a masonry finish to it with painted and painted and colored block, I guess, painted block or smooth face block. Also has some areas of cement plaster, which is a little, small areas here, there, and there. 32-foot-high parapet, it's the highest parapet we have in this building. That being said, any questions or anything I can answer on the building? More than happy.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions at this time? I kind of do. I'd just like to say, Ms. Perry, could you come back up here? I just want to let you know that Ms. Gavin in the back, or I might redirect her, re-economic director, let me just say redevelopment director, and I had a wonderful meeting at your school board, very well-attended. I want to ask the chairwoman, or thank the chairwoman for putting us up the front of the agenda because there were so many people to talk about that energy issue. We could have been there maybe two or three hours. It was a very kind gesture to allow us to get up and discuss with you our needs. And then also, you coming down to City Hall the other day, you know what I mean, and talking about some of the other things that are going on, taking care of the school. Jennifer Doudi had a meeting with you and our engineers, you know? And so we love having you in our building. We like working alongside of you guys. You guys are our partner and we're looking forward to continuing to modernize these schools and to build great schools in North Las Vegas. But, I have one question. It says on that, could you put that first sheet on with the footprint of the big building? This is going to be a tough question, but we are so blessed when North Las Vegas illuminaries get to have their names on schools. And once again, the Goins family over here has a school named after them. I know that a lot of wonderful people deserve schools, but if there's a North Las Vegas person that deserves some recognition, could we get them to get North Las Vegas locations so that we can celebrate the experiences that they had in North Las Vegas? And we understand there's a lot of people that deserve to have schools, but if there's a North Las Vegas person on that list, could we at least get some maybe opportunity to celebrate that life forever in North Las Vegas? How does it work? That'd be my question.
It's very competitive, unfortunately. There is, it became so competitive that they set up an actual policy and guideline for just school naming. So people get nominated and there's a whole process that they have to go through. Used to have to be deceased, that is not the case anymore. It can be people anywhere in the community. I myself don't know how in the world they do pick them, but I do know it's very, I guess it's very competitive, how it.
So you really have to lobby for the school name? Is that what I hear you saying when you say competitive?
No, it's just everybody puts, there's applications, literally hundreds.
There's a huge application process.
Yeah. There's hundreds of applications that go in. And then they have this whole list of criteria that they go through of how they pick them. And I think it's more or less how much they volunteered in the community, what they've contributed to the community. I know that it's not, how do I say, geographically based, but it definitely, I mean, we've got schools like in names for all over, but if you have somebody, I mean, I'm sure, you know, we can.
No, I just didn't want some of North Las Vegas being honored over in Henderson where they could be honored in North Las Vegas, you know? That would, if the time ever comes and we're going to get one of our great educators or somebody named, if we could put a North Las Vegas school, that's, that's all we ask if it's possible. But you have a criteria, I understand that. Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion on this item.
Like to move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say thank you for your staff. They're really wonderful. I mean, they're so willing to work with us and we worked through a lot of issues and problems and that is a huge, huge benefit. So I want to just thank you for all their hard work and all the help that they give us. It's really quite meaningful.
Thank you very much.
And it helps the process.
Very nice to hear. Moving on.
Item seven, pass and adopt ordinance number 2856, pending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 8.66 acres therein from an R1, single-family, low-density district and RE Ranch Estate districts to a PSP, Public Semi-Public District, ZN 3117, La Madre and Lawrence Future Elementary School, for property generally located at the northwest corner of Lawrence Street and La Madre Way and providing further management properly related thereto.
Thank you. Do we have any presentation on this from the general public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, I mean, the public comment section, we'll close this item issue and move on to the public comment section. Mr. Burchard, would you like to come up, please?
What is this currently zoned as?
It says right there.
Did I miss it?
The staff say.
Reclassifying approximately almost nine acres from, okay, from R1, low-density to PSP, Public Semi-Public District. Okay, so they're changing it from low-density housing so they can put an elementary school in there?
Yes, sir.
Now, is this going to be a public school or one of those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm cool with that, as long as it's not a charter school.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public that'd like to come up and address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Counsel, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Number eight, public hearing and pass and adopt resolution 2600, mid-year augmentation of the 2017-2018 budget. Our finance director here, thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you've had the opportunity to review this biannual process. I'll try to move through the slides fairly quickly. So this slide describes the, what budget augmentation is. Most importantly, I want to emphasize that this is not found money and we are not adding to the budget. This is simply housekeeping adjustments to the budget as the normal process of running the city. This slide explains that we're required to do this based on NRS 354 and we submit it to the Department of Taxation. This next slide explains what causes changes to the budget, grant awards, expenditures that have reimbursement revenues, any operating unknowns, forfeiture funds, rollover capital projects, and most particularly establishment of new fund numbers for tracking and reporting. This is a list of this current augmentation. The biggest number, obviously, is the new fund numbers created for tracking and reporting, about 19 million, about eight and a half million for capital project rollovers, and we received about 4.7 million in grants. This will give you the detail of that. The most significant, obviously, is the new fund number created for the Northern Beltway, SID number 65, is almost 19 million. And then here's a description of the capital project carryforwards of about 8.4. Most of it's related to the Utilities Department for water and wastewater projects. And then here's a list of the major grants we received, accounting for 4.7 million. About 4 million of it's obviously Community Development and Housing Program. And then the other significant number is about 400,000 of fire department grants. And then this is the remainder of the various department requests. The police forfeiture funds, which we can't budget until we know what the revenue is. And then this other significant portion of moving the staffing patterns out of the General Fund for graffiti and code enforcement. And then here's the final list. So we increased governmental funds by 25 million. We decreased government and proprietary funds by 16 million, increased proprietary funds by 8 million, for a net change of 17 million to the $601 million budget. And I, our budget manager, Linda Pulaski's here and she worked really hard on this, so I want to thank Linda for all of her work.
Thank you very much. I know that we do this right now and it doesn't really affect anything of our budgets, but this augmentation takes place, and then you mentioned it goes to the legislature, or who does it go to?
It goes to the Department of Taxation at the end of the year. So we'll do another one, our final year adjustment for the next six months, the last council meeting of June, and then submit it to the Department of Taxation as a full annual adjustment.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, the chair will take a motion. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items nine through 13, and staff's recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Motion is passed. Moving on to business.
Item 15, receive a report on authorizing the city attorney to institute legal action against opioid drug manufacturers and distributors. Authorize city attorney to retain and associate with the firm of Eglet Prince for this litigation and execute associate documents or take any other action deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Eglet. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Robert Eglet. I'm the senior partner at Eglet Prince. You'll have to forgive me for my voice tonight. I've been battling a severe cold for the last four days.
Did you use a little medication for that?
No, not this type of medication, as a reserve. So this is a very important issue, I think you all realize, and I'd like to start with reading a quote from the U.S. Surgeon General from August 2016, where he wrote a letter that stated, "Nearly two decades ago, we were encouraged to be more aggressive about treating pain, often without enough training and support to do so safely. This coincided with heavy marketing of opiates to doctors. Many of us were even taught incorrectly that opiates are not addictive when prescribed for legitimate pain. Drug companies know that doctors rely on the information they, the drug companies provide them. In the mid to late 1990s, the opiate manufacturers developed a marketing scheme to persuade doctors and patients to use opiates for chronic pain. The scheme allowed the opiates to be prescribed to a much larger group of patients. Drug companies spent tens of millions of dollars in marketing to provide false information about benefits of long-term opiate use, overstate information about benefits of opiates for chronic pain, claim that opiate dependence and withdrawal are easily managed, and downplay the risk of addiction. In 1970, Congress enacted the Controlled Substance Act that created a closed system for distribution of controlled substances. This law prevents drug manufacturers from selling directly to pharmacies and retailers. This law requires that drug distributors act as the gatekeeper between the manufacturer and the pharmacies and retailers. Under this law, drug distributors have a legal duty to identify, investigate, and report suspicious orders of opiates. Suspicious orders include unusual size of an order, unusual frequency of the order, and unusual pattern of the order. There are over 800 registered drug distributors in the United States. However, only three of these companies control 85% of the market. The big three are McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceVergen. For several years, the big three have failed their gatekeeping duty because they have not been reporting suspicious opiate orders to the authorities. In January 2017, McKesson, the largest drug distributor in the nation, was fined $150 million by the federal government for its blatant failure to report suspicious orders in violation of federal law. Cardinal Health, another member of the big three, was fined $44 million for its own failures to report suspicious opiate orders to the DEA. Not only have they failed to report, but they continue to ship millions of pills into U.S. communities, including Nevada communities. Each of the, each of the big three drug distributors generates over $100 billion in annual revenue. Unfortunately, their scheme worked. In the last two decades, the amount of opiates sold in the United States has more than quadrupled. Over 300 million prescriptions for opiates were written in 2012 alone, and that's more opiate prescriptions than the adult number of Americans. There has been a 450% increase in opiate prescription sales since 1999 without any overall change in reported pain. Opiates are now the most commonly prescribed medication in our country. Opiate addiction impacts all people regardless of race, gender, socioeconomic background, or political affiliation. Now, there are 2 million people in America addicted to prescription opiates, which is significantly contributing to the increased heroin problem we have across this country. Nearly 80% of new heroin users took prescription opiates before starting heroin. People addicted to prescription opiates are 40 times more likely to become addicted to heroin. And in 2015, there were nearly 13,000 heroin overdoses deaths in the United States. The most recent figures from the CDC suggest that over 170 Americans die every day from an opiate or heroin overdose. Drug overdose deaths are now the leading cause of injury and death in the United States. In 2016, the number of overdose deaths in the United States was higher than the number of Americans that died in the Vietnam War. Since 2000, over 340,000 Americans have died from opiate overdoses. According to the Nevada Substance Abuse Working Group 2017 report, there were 94 painkiller prescriptions for every 100 Nevada residents. And Nevada ranks second highest for hydrocodone, second highest for oxycodone, fourth highest for methadone, and seventh highest for codeine. Nevada has the fourth-highest drug overdose mortality rate in the United States. The number of drug overdose deaths in Nevada has increased by 80% since 1999. A report published in November 2017 by President Trump's Economic Advisory Council concluded that in 2015 alone, the estimated economic impact of the opiate crisis was $504 billion, or 2.8% of the U.S.'s gross domestic product for that same year. County and city governments and the services they provide, their citizens have been strained to the breaking point by this public health crisis. Human services, social services, court services, law enforcement services, the office of the coroner, medical examiner, and health services, including hospital, emergency, and ambulatory services, have all been severely impacted by the crisis. The drug companies knew their marketing and the way opiates were prescribed was contrary to the scientific and medical evidence. And their misrepresentations have been confirmed by the FDA and the CDC. Some drug companies have entered into settlement agreements with public entities which prohibit them from marketing those faults and misleading misrepresentation, misrepresentations in those jurisdictions. However, in Nevada, opiate drug companies continue to misrepresent the risk of long-term opiate use, and they have not corrected or changed their past misrepresentations. Over 350 lawsuits have been filed by various cities and counties and states around the It's just slowed down on me, Brandon. Each Nevada city is wise to bring its own case in Nevada state courts because, one, we have a more favorable forum in our state district courts where jurisdiction we have a more favorable forum in our state district courts where jurisdiction for these cases reside, and, two, each city will have more control over the litigation. Three, the city council will have discretion over how settlement proceeds are allocated, and, four, the city is likely to have a larger settlement amount. Nevada has the best product liability laws in the country for plaintiffs and consumers. For example, Nevada has not adopted the learned intermediary doctrine, which allows the drug companies in many states to simply blame the prescribing doctors, and Nevada has no cap on punitive damages in product liability cases. Like Clark County and Reno have done, North Las Vegas should file its own case in our state courts and be represented by a Nevada law firm. If a Nevada city simply retains an out-of-state firm who will file their case in federal court and have it shipped off to the Northern Federal District Court of Ohio, where the MDL, the multi-district litigation, has been created, it will end up as just one of hundreds of cases that are there or headed there in your city, and they'll be stalled for many, many, many years in these MDLs, and your city will lose all control of the lawsuit and its ultimate resolution, and the city will get lost in the shuffle. Also, cases in federal court are much more difficult to obtain a favorable verdict for plaintiffs. Damages for Nevada cities include past damages and future damages. Past damages is money that the city has already expended to combat the opiate epidemic. Past damages include EMS and first responders' expenses, including Narcon. Narcon is a drug that reverses the effects of an opiate overdose, and the cost of Narcon, this is the pharmaceutical companies who are charging you and other cities and counties' first responders for this to save people that they, their own pills caused them to overdose. But the, the cost of this Narcon varies from a hundred and fifty dollars to four thousand dollars per dose. The city is also entitled to recoup expenses for, one, the law enforcement and jailing surrounding opiates, two, drug courts, three, substance abuse programs, and, four, increased expenses associated with child welfare. This has put a huge strain on the child welfare services. Future damages include education, rehabilitation, and medical monitoring. The city is also entitled to future costs to continue to provide services and programs associated with the health consequences of the opiate epidemic. Include, and they, other damage, other damages include punitive damages and order mandating medical monitoring for Nevada opiate users and an order restricting future marketing practices of these pharmaceutical companies. My firm, Eglet Prince, has already been retained by Clark County and Reno, and we have filed lawsuit on behalf of Clark County and are shortly getting ready to file a lawsuit for Reno. We're being retained by Henderson as well. City of Las Vegas is kind of dragging their feet a little bit, but they'll get there. And we're on the Lyon County's agenda to be approved to represent them next week. And most importantly, or not most importantly, but one of the important things for the city is that we have budgeted fifteen million dollars in cost to prosecute this case. Now, that budget is based on us representing, you know, all the counties or a few of the counties and cities, because it doesn't really make much difference. Once you add another plaintiff, the costs are the same. It's the same expert, same deposition. We've advanced fifteen million. My partners and I have set aside fifteen million dollars to pay the cost of this litigation. So no resources will be required by the North Las Vegas. And so we're willing to advance the cost for the litigation and take all the risks involved. So your city is not at risk, nor will any of its resources have to be used to prosecute this case. We've handled many large cases against drug manufacturers and distributors. We are very familiar with the pharmaceutical industry, their business practices, the potential defendants in this case, and the law firms that represent them. We've sued many of the defendants that are in this case previously on other matters, and we've been successful against them every time. We've obtained, I don't like saying this part, but my partners say I have to. We, we have obtained the largest injury verdicts in the country twice, in 2010 and 2013. We obtained the third-largest verdict in the country in 2011 and the thirty-ninth-largest verdict in the country in 2007. I am the only trial lawyer in the country to ever obtain the largest injury verdicts in America twice. I'm the only trial lawyer in America to obtain two verdicts in the top five in two consecutive years, and the only trial lawyer in America to obtain verdicts in the top five in the country in three out of four consecutive years. I've obtained more multimillion-dollar verdicts than any lawyer in the history of our state, and I am the only lawyer in Nevada to ever be named Trial Lawyer of the Year twice. I was honored as National Trial Lawyer of the Year in 2013 and National Lawyer of the Year in 2010. In 2014, the National Law Journal named my firm as one of the twelve best injury law firms in America and also named us as one of the fifty best trial firms in the country. Our reputation benefits our clients because it leads to larger settlements and quicker resolutions. Three of our senior partners are lifelong residents of Nevada. My partner over here, Robert Adams, actually grew up in North Las Vegas, and until just a few years ago, still lived there, I think.
Till eight months.
Till eight months ago, still, still lived in your city. So this is our home. This case is personal to us. We have witnessed the ravaging of this epidemic through our community. I don't know anyone who doesn't have a family member, a neighbor, somebody they go to church with, somebody in their community, somebody they work with who hasn't been directly impacted by the devastation this epidemic has caused. We're a local firm with strong relationships with the Nevada judiciary, and we are prepared to allocate all the resources of our firm necessary to litigate this case to conclusion. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Eglet. We'll see about that. Counselor, any comments or questions? Councilmember Ong?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Eglet. I have to admit, your voice on NPR a few days ago was fantastic. I know it's an unrelated matter, but I also applaud you going after the bump stock manufacturers for having wrought such devastation upon our combined community. Well, for me, Mayor, this actually kind of hit close. I do have a cousin who passed away, and he died as a result of an addiction to these, to opioids, you know, as a result of an accident that he had. Potentially, I know it's, you're just starting off here with us. I know that we have been briefed a bit. How strong is our case here in North Las Vegas in regards to this, to this lawsuit?
Well, North Las Vegas's case isn't any stronger and weaker than any other county or, or city-state. There are some counties, some rural counties. I gave you the statistic of eighty-four, for eight, for every one hundred Nevadans, there's eighty-four or ninety-four opiate prescriptions. In, in Nye County, for example, it's a hundred and thirty-five prescriptions for every one hundred people. So more prescriptions being written than there are for, for people, these opiate prescriptions. But I, I can just say this. I've been practicing here in Nevada for thirty years now. And a lot of that practice, most of that practice, is involved product liability against large manufacturers, corporations and manufacturers, and drug, drug pharmaceutical cases. This is the very best liability-wise, this is the very best liability case I've ever seen against the pharmaceutical industry. Not all the entire industry, but the opiate manufacturers and the distributors who distributed their, these opiates. And it is the best case I've ever seen. I've never, in my view, this is one of the biggest frauds on, not only on the American people, but on the American medical community, because the medical community were defrauded into prescribing their patients these pills that ultimately ended up turning them into addicts. The typical story that we hear and we've seen many, many times is, is Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick, and I know she doesn't mind me sharing this story with you because she shares it wherever she goes. And this is typically how it happens. A kid in high school has a sports injury, in this case, her daughter, that results in a, in a surgery of some kind, a knee surgery, a shoulder surgery, or something like that. They have the surgery, and then they get prescribed these opiates post-surgery. And before the mid-1990s, these opiates were only used for end-of-life care, someone who's going to die in three weeks of cancer, so it doesn't matter if they become addicted, you just want to alleviate their pain, or for acute pain, severe acute pain, so you might give them a prescription for three to seven days, and they're done. The pharmaceutical companies convinced the doctors that they can prescribe these pills for, they can give a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty-day prescriptions and just hand them out. So what happens is, first of all, they claimed it was only one, less than one percent of the community would be, get addicted, and their addictions could be managed easily. We now know that it's a quarter of the people who take these opiates get addicted, and then what happens? When they can't take, when they can't get prescriptions anymore from their doctors, they turn to the streets. They sell these pills on the streets. They're everywhere, and they soon learn that for an opiate, an oxycontin or an oxycodone, for the price of that on the street, on the street, you can get black tar heroin for about twenty to thirty percent less. And black tar heroin has the exact same chemical compound as these drugs. It is the same. This is heroin these people are taking in a, in a pill form. So the typical story is Marilyn Kirkpatrick's story. Her daughter gets a sports injury in high school. She has a surgery. She gets given, she's provided these pills. She becomes addicted. Then she turns to the streets and taking the pills off the streets, buying them, ultimately she turns to heroin. She's now been through rehab four times. Every time I talk to Marilyn, she answers the phone and says to me, day ninety-four, day ninety-seven, whatever the number of days it's been since her daughter last, you know, took heroin or an opiate. And this is, this is, this cuts across everybody. You know, it used to be in the seventies, we, the heroin epidemic was pretty isolated to the inner cities of New York and Baltimore and places like that, and they, and they preyed mostly on the minorities. They're, they're preying on everyone now, everyone. And it is, in my view, the, the biggest domestic crisis of our lifetime. If you just look at the economic impacts on the country, over five-hundred billion dollars in one year.
Systematic, obviously. Thank you very much.
Counselor, any other comments or questions? Ms. Goines-Brown?
I don't know if it's a comment or que, well, just, it just seems to me like, who's going to ultimately be accountable? You know, the pharmaceutical companies, the doctors, because it's so, I mean, like, when you go to the, I just went to the doctor last week. The third question after name and your vitals is, what's your pharmacy? It's like, before you even ask me what's wrong with me, you want my pharmacy, so automatically it's a prescription. It's just so easy. So where's that fit into this equation as to who's to stop or to say, you can and you can't write this prescription, or the dosage amount, and, you know, how does that all fit into this big puzzle?
Well, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not going to tell a doctor how to, how to, how to practice medicine. All I would say, Councilwoman, is that the medical profession, particularly the, the family, family doctors who are seeing, you know, tons and tons of patients every day and have to, and their, their reimbursements get cut even more every, every year by Medicare and Medicaid and the insurance companies, so they're having to see more and more patients just to keep up. They're told, hey, this will keep the, one of your patients from having to come back and see you for three or four months, so they prescribe the drugs for three or four months, and then they end up addicts. What, how this will have an impact is, one of the, the things that we're asking for in this lawsuit is an injunction against the, our pharmaceutical companies, and New York has been successful in that, getting an injunction against them from preventing them from engaging in the same type of marketing techniques that they've been doing for the last two decades. I, I've sued many, many pharmaceutical companies over the year. I've never seen a marketing campaign like this as aggressive as this, as they did for this. But to answer the question, what this lawsuit will do is make the pharmaceutical companies and distributors accountable and pay for the damages they caused and pay for what it's going to take to repair the damages, because the only thing that works, it's a curable disease, but the only thing that works is inpatient medical treatment. And it takes more than one twenty-eight day in most cases, day stay in most cases. Well, in Clark County, nationwide, an average twenty-eight day stay is twenty-five thousand dollars. In Clark County, it's forty thousand dollars. So the cities and the counties should be provided this money by the pharmaceutical companies so they can get their citizens the treatment, because the only way you're going to cure this problem is get it at the root and solve the addictions. So, you know, ultimately, it's legislatures and Congress who are going to order, I guess, you know, you can't sell these pills or you can't prescribe these pills under certain circumstances. I know the 2017 legislature in Nevada had a couple of bills that they passed that is making it much tougher for people to get their, these drugs, and certainly they have to get them for only shorter period of times. But what you need to be prepared for with that legislation now going into effect is all those people who are addicted to, to, to these opiates and can't get them or can't get them as mu, much, they're going to turn to heroin. You're going to see a spike in heroin addictions in your city, in every city and community in this state. That's what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Senior questions? At this time, the chair will take a motion to authorize a city attorney to take legal action and retain Eglet Prince for litigation. Is there an appetite for that?
Whoa, 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 why do you have a card?
I'm sorry. Let me open it for a public company to take that motion. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Prokem.
Okay.
Mr. Burchard?
Yeah. You have to hit on a subject I know a lot about. This guy is a great attorney. I, I've never met him till tonight, but he is, got all the markings of a tremendously powerful attorney, because he just did a great job telling you his side of the story, but he didn't tell the other side of the story. I have been using opioids now for ten years. I got hooked on them because I had a bout with kidney stones. The first time I had a kidney stone problem was over eighteen years ago. And for those that have never had a kidney stone attack, let me tell you what it feels like. It feels like there's something inside of your stomach trying to work its way out. And the only thing they had to give me was opioids, and I'm taking Hydroco, not oxycodone. Oxycodone is highly addictive. This product, if used under a doctor's supervision, is not highly addictive. Okay, without oxycodone, I cannot walk. Without oxycodone, I'd be in so much pain, I could not hold down a job and function. I'd be in horrible pain, and I'd be depressed. They're working great for me. What's more dangerous is the Tylenol it's laced with. My drugist has told me many times, before you have problems with the Hydroco, you're going to have problems with it, with the Tylenol. But yet you can't buy the pill without Tylenol. You can, but the pill is ten times more. Now, what, what's really going on here is, you know, we're blaming the product that, if used right under doctor's supervision, isn't going to hurt anybody. But here's the problem. Hydroco, you can't drink a beer with it. If you drink, take Hydroco and have two, three drinks, the side effect is your heart slows down, your heart stops beating, and you die. And a lot of people can't, they have to have both vices. They have to drink beer, alcohol, and pop pills. Well, you know what? That's their problem. A lot of this has happened because kids get a hold of it. Well, I don't have any kids in my house. If I did have children in my house, these things would be in a safe with my kids can't get to. So what you're going to do, now, listen, he got a half hour. How much time do I get? Because this is important.
Don't distract us. Just keep talking.
Okay. Trump wants to take Hydroco, the product I'm on, off the Medicare list, which means my co-pay would go from a twenty-five dollar co-pay to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. And it would make it really tough on other older people. They have chronic pain. My chronic pain comes from two bad joints, diabetic neuropathy, which feels like your feet on fire, and, you know, just years and years of playing too many sports and, you know, spinal problems. Now, I have talked to my doctors. Can we operate? Can we make this pain go away? No, we can't. Your best option right now is pain management. And I've been on And I've been on it for 10 years. Am I addicted to it? Yeah, if I quit taking these things, I would have withdrawal. But I'm not addicted to the point that, that I can't function. Right now, I'm functioning fine. Don't you think I'm functioning okay? But keep in mind, in the daytime...
I don't think he's, I don't think he's discussing people that are managing their pain like you are, but Mr.?
Well, they're going to make it tougher for people like me. And, you know, in a time when they just made marijuana legal, and I tried marijuana thinking that might help the pain, I didn't see where it helped the pain, it did lead to a lot of depression, so I tried it, I got them off of it, I'm just doing these pills. And, uh, you know, I don't want to see this drug being taken away from people like me.
Okay, we understand, and that, that's a good point, very, very good point. So...
You have any questions? Because I'm an expert in this product, because I've done the research.
Yeah, we believe you.
But I'm telling you, this is totally motivat, this lawsuit is a class-action lawsuit, it's totally driven by money, where the, the law firm gets huge sums of money, and then the rest of it trickles down to the people who actually have been impacted by something. This is not Jesus Christ, this is a businessman who's trying to make money. So let's call a spade a spade. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate that, and we understand the, uh, the expense that the cities are taking on and stuff. There is a good discussion, it's in a place, a judge will make this decision. And interestingly, people such as you who have this much knowledge will have a chance to, to participate in that, a bigger discussion. So anyway, um, there is a motion on the floor to author, or there's not a motion on the floor, I'm calling for a motion to authorize a city attorney to take legal action and retain egglet prints for lit, litigation. Is there a motion and an appetite for this?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our, uh, city attorney to, uh, take this action.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on.
Item 14, discussion and/or action regarding council's decision to reduce municipal court judge departments from two to one judge.
Judge Sean Hoffman, North Las Vegas Municipal Court. Uh, I believe this item was put at the request for Councilman Churchill several months back to have this item, uh, when the council took the action back in December 2016 to go down to one judicial department. A request was made to, you know, get an update as to the court's status with that being done. Uh, I need to clarify some issues, is that the, the court was not downsized to one department until July 1st of 2017. Uh, since that time, the court's taken certain actions to help us with that adjustment. What we've done, uh, since July is we've had, one of our pro tem judges, Judge David Salmon has come to assist the court with its calendaring. Uh, he actually sits in, uh, in one of our courtrooms several times a week to help with the court's overflow. He also assists the court with its, um, on holidays and on Saturdays, we have to have a judge set bail and probable cause determinations. Also, he has assisted me with the telephonic search warrant duties that us judges locally are responsible for taking calls from our local police departments 24 hours a day when they need to get authorization for a search warrant, for a blood draw, for DUI cases. So he's helped with that. Uh, since December of 2016, our caseload has pretty much maintained its current, its level since that time. Uh, we were maybe expecting a certain spike in cases being filed with the municipal court in light of, uh, you know, staffing levels with the police department, but that hasn't really material, materialized just yet. So at this time, you know, the courts were doing things that what were needed to keep the doors open. Uh, we are handling our cases as best as we can with the staffing levels that we do have, but for the time being, I don't see any recommendations for this council to take any action with respect, uh, to, you know, to the court. Uh, my only recommendation is maybe we can review it sometime, at a future date to determine if, you know, if and when we're going to need a second judicial department. Certainly, there are certain issues that we can address at that time. Uh, maybe the ca, the calendar, the caseload have, will have changed at that time, or, you know, or any other issues that may come up. So that would be my recommendations, is, you know, kind of leave things as is, we're doing okay over at the court, and then we can look at it at a future date. And so if you, any members of the mayor have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Counsel, any comments or questions at this time? See, now, we have two people from the general public that, if you'd stay close, there's some questions you can answer. Mr. Bouchard, please come forward again. Uh, Ms. Anita Wood, Councilwoman of...
Anita Wood, 4108 Bola Drive, North Las Vegas, Nevada. Uh, I'm here tonight because of two items, but this is one, and one I'm very passionate about. I had a great deal of concern when this decision was made. We have the second busiest court in the state. We hear more cases than the city of Reno and Henderson, and yet each of those cities has a minimum, minimum of three courts. And we are doing more than them, we were doing more than them with just two. And now we're trying to do more than them with just one. The impact on the court has to be severe and significant, and, and I give great kudos to Judge Hoffman for the fact that he is finding a way to make this work. But the fact is, he shouldn't have to be doing that. Uh, and what I'm truly disappointed about for this evening's meeting is that there is not one piece of paper as a backup document giving the facts regarding this issue for the public. Not a list of how many cases they've handled, not an expense account of, you know, have they brought in the same amount of money in the past seven, eight months that they've been doing this versus when we had the two-court system? Uh, you know, there's nothing, there's not one bit of information. And when Councilman Churchill and I, at that time, requested for this review, that's what we were looking for. We were looking for the documentation and the information. This is supposed to be saving us money. How is it doing that? There's not one piece of paper talking about that. So now we are paying, uh, I believe we had talked about bringing in some kind of company to run the traffic court, so we're paying them, we're paying the, uh, I'm sorry, what's the term?
Pro tem judge.
The pro tem judge. So we're paying him for his services, for the after-hours and weekends and the several days a week. So is, in fact, this producing the savings that it was supposed to be producing? There's not a document anywhere. So to have this discussion without a single document, without a, an answer to any of the basic questions, I don't even know how you do this. And, and I'm very concerned that none of this is being put forward for the public. You know, no statement from the chief of police to see if this is having an impact on PD, a minimal statement from the judge, who I think is doing what he's doing primarily because he feels like no matter what he says, the decision's been made, so he's just making the best of it, but not really with the details that we need to decide whether this was a good decision or one we need to revisit. So I hope that you will do a thorough investigation in finding out the answers and getting those numbers and knowing whether this was the right decision or not. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, this was a presentation that the judge actually brought back to us, so you might be able to get your information. Uh, maybe he hasn't, he just didn't deliver it today, I don't know. Um, next, Mr. Bouchard.
Boy, I'm sure glad I came here tonight. Yeah, I mean, I, I have to agree with Anita Woods. Uh, God bless her for coming down here. Thank you, Anita. This is a bad idea. This is just the result of a city that is still floundering to try and balance its budget by reducing services to taxpayers. I think it's a horrible idea, you're going to have cases backed up. I think it's a horrible idea, I did have one judge hearing all these cases. Uh, I am totally against this on so many different levels. Uh, you know, I'm going to have to stand by Anita Woods. I hope you people really consider what you're doing here. But once again, it just shows that we have financial problems in this town, because we're letting the unions dictate these huge salaries. You know, I mean, I, I see the chief of police isn't here tonight, but boy, when it, when the, when these wages with the police department, boy, they're down here and they're mad. You know, they said, "Let, let's pay this, let's pay Ryan Juden $300,000 because he's going to vote our way." Yeah, we, we've got to balance this budget sooner or later. And I don't, you know, and, and I don't like the way you're balancing the budget by not, you know, we're 10 years behind our infrastructure. How do I know this? I went down as the city of Las Vegas, and the city manager told me that this city is falling apart from the inside out. That's what the city manager told me, from Las Vegas, and he must know, he's a neighbor. So yeah, I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counsel, any more comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to accept this report.
I don't know if that results in any questions for me directly based on the comments just made, but, you know, obviously, if there's any, uh, information required of the council members, that certainly can be provided regarding. We do provide monthly reports to each of you from court administration that talks about the misdemeanor cases that are filed, traffic and parking cases that are filed that month, fines that are assessed or imposed, fines that are collected, warrants that are issued, warrants that are served, trials that are scheduled, things like that. To address some of the comments, what we've done at the court is we do utilize our customer service windows tremendously, as much as we can, to alleviate, uh, you know, court docket, court sessions to address those issues. I know some of the other courts mentioned they do what they call monthly status checks, where if you have a, if you're under a program where you have to do counseling or classes or community service or make monthly payments, you got to go see the judge every month in court. Uh, you know, that's something that we haven't done for, for quite a while, because I just want to treat people that come to my court like adults, that they can go to the front counter to take care of their business at the front counter. If any questions need to be answered by the judge or issues that come up, then things can be scheduled for court. But like I said, at the time, you know, when you guys made the decision back in December, the basis for that decision, decision when I read and, uh, and we, uh, saw that vote be taken place, is that it was due to the decrease in caseload with the court, which is true. And since December, the caseload has pretty much maintained the same level. Um, just to put on the record, though, that, just so that, I don't know if you guys were all aware, is all the courts in Nevada, as a result of recession, for one reason or another, all the courts did experience a decrease in their caseloads, their respective caseloads. So that will be the conclusion of my statements. If you have no questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Churchill?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Judge, for coming in here and, uh, and giving us that presentation. I'd like to know, uh, if you could tell us on such short notice, um, how are we adjudicating those cases? Are we adjudicating the cases with one court timely, uh, or are they backing up? Uh, but absent that, you know, in addition, uh, at the very least, uh, I, I would want to see some additional information. I know we're just going to accept the presentation here tonight.
Right.
Uh, but I would also like to see, uh, a, a follow-up, uh, report as well.
Okay. So that's certain, something we can look into, if we could maybe have specific questions that need to be answered. With respect to our calendaring, our caseload, what we've done with our sessions is we've just enlarged the sessions, so I'm actually on the bench for a longer duration of the day. Um, and so what we've been able to accomplish with that is, we haven't seen a, a projected out where we're scheduling cases much further down the road because of our, our space. But like I said, Pro tem Judge Salmon helps a lot with that. When he comes in those several days a week to do court sessions for me, those sessions are quite large, and, uh, we've, we're monitoring that to make sure he's okay with that, and, uh, and so like I said, what we've done, we've just kind of enlarged our court sessions on a daily basis to bring more people into court, and so far, we've been able to manage that. But you will certainly know, you'll be the first to know, when it does become an issue, where we feel like that the access to justice is being affected because the caseload and the way we're handling things, uh, you'll be the first to know, and then we can take action, or you guys can take action at that time.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, Mayor.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Judge, thank you very much for coming down. Um, so what I'm hearing is, we do not, we have, uh, overall, um, our city, like other cities, has reduced caseload. We have good creative, uh, teamwork between yourself and the Judge Pro Tem Salmon, one of my schoolmates at Rancho High School, by the way. I just want to, I want to put that out there. Uh, so we don't have a, we don't have an increased backlog. Um, this sounds like increased efficiency. And correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we also have lots of people stepping in and on a pro tem, uh, basis anyhow, when we had another full-time judge who wasn't showing up to court?
Well, yeah, I don't want, I don't want to rehash the past, I mean, this is already...
No, but I'd like to refresh the memory for, from, for certain people in the room...
Yeah, during that last part, when, when the other judge was here, we did experience a lot of that.
Yeah, I'd just like to go ahead and refresh the memory for certain people in the room, uh, before, uh, just, uh, we, we go ahead and, um, start, uh, accusing our, um, or saying that our residents are getting reduced, um, service. If anything, we're getting more efficient service from people who are actually doing their job at the court.
Right, and that's, you know, you know, if you were to look at prior years, our staffing levels were too much higher, but that's true for all city departments. Um, but certainly with the people that we have, they are doing excellent work at the court.
Judge, thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mayor, or anybody?
You kind of, you answered my, I just wanted, you know, check the, the numbers.
Right.
And just so we'll get that reported at another, at another date.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, if you guys want to put this back on agenda, and you want those numbers to be like a, you know, some sort of presentation, like indicated earlier, we do provide those numbly, numbly, uh, those monthly stats to you so that you do have that information on a monthly basis. But I looked at what our numbers were in, in, in December of 2016, and then comparing that with, because we really have to compare it, is what is the last report for the fiscal year, which is June of, June of each year. So I looked at our report from June of 2017, and then projecting it out to June of 2018, the numbers pretty much, it's pretty constant. I mean, we have a little dip here on the criminal misdemeanor side, but our traffic cases, there's been a decrease with that. So our numbers are pretty fairly consistent from, from these past years, the past couple years. But we'll provide that for you when needed.
Okay.
And when asked for.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll accept this report. Thank you very much.
Okay, right, thank you, Mayor.
We don't need to have a motion on this, we're just accepting this. Um, moving on to item 16...
Mayor, you don't want to make a, set a time for, uh, to get this a follow-on information?
We're going to wait until he meets and brings his stuff back.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Item 16, ratify settlement agreement with Alfredo Martinez Suarez and the City of North Las Vegas. Clark County Eighth Judicial District Court Case Number A16733601C, and the amount $135,000 from the self-insurance fund.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation on this?
Mayor and Council, um, this is a litigation matter that was set for trial in February 5, and the recommendation from my office was to, um, pursue a settlement on this, which would have, which I, I do believe does save the city money.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Want to make a motion to approve?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Um, item number 17, pass and adopt resolution number 2594, repealing resolution number 2522, to add a provision for residency requirements, term limits, limitations on citizen services, and removal from office for the Arts and Cultural Advisory Board. Adam, City Clerk?
Mayor and Council, this item was continued from the past meeting on February the 7th, as proposed in February 7th, on page 2 in section 3, in regards to membership and terms of the committee. There were, um, three sign, three lines that spoke to residency requirements. One was going to be that residents would need to be, they would need to be residents to be a member directly appointed by council or a council member. It, the two-at-large appointments were actually going to be at-large, and then the, the E paragraph stipulated that if anybody was on the, um, board at the time this was passed, that they would stay until the term ended. Um, following that meeting, there were suggestions by Councilmember Rowne to, um, strike those residence requirements from paragraph C and B, and to strike, um, E. And so what you have before you on the dais labeled as number 17 is that proposal. I understand there's some other council member has, wants to discuss this item as well, so that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowne, are you okay with this?
Yeah, um, thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, and, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. City Clerk. Um, I just wanted to say, um, you know, um, of course, our arts and culture here in North Las Vegas, it's still a fledgling, um, program. Um, the, the committee itself has only been in existence for, for a few years here, and we've had some success with, of course, with our, our art gallery, that's, uh, a very humbly, basically in the foyer, uh, of this fine building. We're looking forward to, uh, new, with the help of, of course, our econ... We're looking forward to new, with the help of, of course, our economic director, Ms. Gavin, who is doing everything she can to help us acquire properties to which we can add to our arts and cultural infrastructure here in North Las Vegas. But we're still fledging. We're trying to establish an identity, and I think the reason why I argue that we should have positions open to people who are members of this greater community, not necessarily North Las Vegas residents, is to attract interest and to also bring in, how should I say, talent from the surrounding community. As much as I am a cheerleader for our fair little city, I recognize that it's our neighbors to the south who are far, very far ahead of us when it comes to establishing a thriving arts community, and it behoves us to do everything we can to attract people who have great experience. Not that our residents don't, may have our, some of our residents do, but we are part of a greater community, and to be able to attract and bring the expertise of the entire community, so a few members, and make it open this Arts and Cultural Board so we can get eventually a full-time, vibrant, and very active arts and cultural program here in our city. It behoves us to be able to attract people from the greater community around us. And of course, every councilperson, including yourself and Mayor, you will have the utmost discretion into who you're going to appoint. If you want to appoint for yourself and argue for the at-large members to be North Las Vegas residents, there's nothing wrong with that. But in case there is a member on this board who would like to bring in someone that they happen to meet, who is a very well-known children's artist for books, you can bring them in to bring, you know, their cultural experience. If there's someone who is a noted historian, an art historian, and lives in Henderson, we can bring their, their, their passion to be a part of this board. So, again, it's not that we're trying to demean or negate or reduce our own citizens' participation, but rather, we're trying to add and supplement and augment.
Thank you very much. Any counsel, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Richard?
I have a comment. Councilmember Ron, just after the discussion yesterday and just hearing you today, I do worry, I think we haven't tapped enough into our citizens in North Las Vegas because we do have a lot of willingness to serve forums that we don't, and I shouldn't say that we don't, that are there, and we have citizens that are willing to serve. I don't know why we haven't reached out to them. I know that's partially could be on us as well. So, that's just my only hesitancy about that is just, I think, and I see your point very well taken, but I still think it's important that we, you know, pull from our own backyard, so to speak. I think we have lots of talent right here in our own city, and I see your point as well. So, that's just my, I don't know, I kept thinking about that yesterday.
Oh, yeah, and I totally, and I totally agree with you. Matter of fact, the last person that I personally appointed is a young woman who she's the, she's a North Las Vegas resident, and she's also the creator of the Hispanic Museum here in the valley, and it's actually in Las Vegas. And so, you know, she, but she's a North Las Vegas resident, and I personally appointed her. It just, and again, all the councilpeople are, are, you have the discretion to appoint whoever you like, and I will point out that recently, we, I think we're adopting an ordinance to let, to only allow people to serve on one board at a time. So, I think that's also going to help us, that's going to also encourage us to pick more North Las Vegas residents in the, in the overall body of all the boards that we have. So, and again, you know, we have them, and I most definitely encourage our North Las Vegas residents, you know, to be a part of this, right? But in the past, we, when it was almost all North Las Vegas residents, we appointed people, and they didn't always all show up. And so, I would definitely like to make sure that we have passionate people who always are responsive, and if not, you know, if we have to go outside of our, outside of our city to find them, I would just like us to be able to be at liberty to do so. Think, but thank you so very much. And of course, you know, yourself, you are an artist yourself, a fantastic musician, and I, yes, you know, it just, hey, you know, I, I let it, I let it fall where it goes, you know, but you might be a weird person, but I love you anyhow. And so, that being said, you know, of course, I'm a musician too, so weird knows weird.
Counselman Black, have anything to say, or, because I, I just want to make a comment. I spoke to Councilmember Ron just a little bit on this earlier, and I respect his concern and his opinion when it comes to the Arts and Cultural Board. My concern, and I don't know if we could do it, is I'm not comfortable with changing the ordinance for all of our boards. I could see a very passionate, you know, person who is into the arts and culture to come here from a different part of the valley for a meeting here, but when it comes to our other boards over here with all of our resources that we have here in North Las Vegas for our planning, for our parks and rec, you know, I think we have the resources over here, particularly since we've now kind of adjusted our ordinances to have certain criteria for serving on certain boards, one board versus two or three. If there's some way that, that, you know, I could support the councilman here without changing the complexion of all of the, the ordinance and mitigating what we have in the other boards there, I'd be happy to do that when it comes to the arts and culture, but I'm just not comfortable with, with changing everything for one board.
So, Mayor Pro Tem, this resolution, 2594, only speaks to the Arts and Culture Board. It doesn't speak to the other ones. We've already passed those resolutions, or you have, and the ordinances stipulating the residency requirements and the number of members, the boards that they can be on. So, this would only affect this board if we support the changes or if you support the changes that are proposed here.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Richard, would you like to come up and enlighten us on this?
I'm going to pass a list where I think you should.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? The chair will take a motion.
Ms. Churchill?
You got a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
So, wait, so my only, on this one, just my only hesitancy is that, one, the residency requirement. So, kind of split here. I mean, everything else I support, it's just that one part, so it's either all or nothing, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You're talking about only this one?
Just on the Arts and Cultural Board.
There's two proposals. The original one requires, allows the mayor and councilmember to appoint residents to, for their direct appointees, and then two members at large can be appointed by the council as whole from any, from any local city. And so, the, that was the original proposal, and it was continued to this meeting. So, tonight's draft, it's on the dais there for you on page two, if you see it in red. The red is what is being recommended by Councilmember Ron to be struck out. That would remove any citizen requirements to be appointed to that board.
Now, this can be changed at another time also.
No, this is the time.
We could bring it back, we could bring it back to the council.
You could continue this item again, yes?
No, no, not that one. If we vote this today, six months from now, we could bring it back and say, now we want to put residency requirements in.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, that's, I'm just, so what we do here today isn't going to limit it forever.
But anyway, these are our appointees that we, that we chose, just not, so I could still just choose from a North Las Vegas resident, red, sorry, resident.
So, let me, let me say it a different way. If we, if you adopt the changes that Councilmember Ron suggests, then it would be up to you to specifically appoint a city resident if you so desire, and, but you have the liberty to appoint someone outside the city for your direct appointments as well as the at-large appointments.
Okay. I can work with that, sir. Okay.
Okay. Did you have something to say, Richard?
No, 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 no. All right, based on all of that clarification and the fact that I know that we could always bring something back, you know, either one of us just for, for, you know, tweaking, so to speak, in the future, I'll go ahead and make a motion with the amendments that Councilmember Ron proposed. Am I correct in that?
Yes, you are.
Please cast your vote. We have a motion. Items approved.
Item eighteen, approve cancellation of the regularly scheduled city council meetings of July four, 2018, and November twenty-one, 2018. Mayor and counsel, July fourth of this year is, falls on a Wednesday, which is a regular council meeting. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving also is November twenty-first, when we would normally have a regular meeting. It's staff recommendation that we would not reschedule those meetings, but instead, we would council them.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? The chair will take a motion. More to approve? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item nineteen, presentation by Nevada Department of Transportation of its I-15 US-93 garnet interchange and US-93 capacity improvements.
Gentlemen, if I'd have known we were going to be working this late, I would have had you come up a little sooner. I recognize you have to go to work tomorrow, and I didn't think about that at the time.
Not a problem, Mayor. We're happy to be here and happy to discuss this project with the city of North Las Vegas. So, as an introduction, my name is Ryan Wheeler. I'm with the Department of Transportation, a senior project manager for the department. Been with them three years. Work address is right here in the city building on the third floor. Home address is Logan Dale, Nevada. So, I have been asked to give a presentation about the Garnet Design/Build Project, and so I have several slides that I'll share with council, staff, and members of the public here. So, just for your information, the Garnet project is located 21 miles north along I-15 from downtown Las Vegas at the intersection of I-15 and US-93. The owner is NDOT, and we work with Federal Highway Association, and we have hired two consultants to help us in delivering this project. One is our program manager, WSP, and also DCS, which is a construction management company. The contractor that won the, the design-build contract is Ames Construction. They're the general contractor, and they have hired the, the design firm, Horrocks Engineers, as their lead designer. This is a design-build project, and so, as the owner, it lets out the contract, the contractor works with their designer to design it to 100% and then go build it. Little project overview here for you. You see I-15 to the right of the page and US-93 going up to the top left of the page. Kind of the highlights is right there at the intersection there. We're going to reconstruct that intersection, which those bridges are over 50 years old. They're built in 1964. And then, there's three intersections that we're going to improve there, Apex Great Basin Way, Grand Valley Parkway, and Apex Power Parkway. Going into the project, the department had certain goals we wanted to accomplish, so I'm going to read these to you. There are to improve safety, mobility, and access for the segment of I-15 and US-93 transportation corridor and adjacent developing property. Number two, to minimize disruptions to the traveling public, local businesses, the freight movement out there, local property access during construction, and strive to use accelerated construction. Number three, the goal is to deliver a safe project for the workers and also for the traveling public. And number four is to deliver a high-quality, aesthetically pleasing, durable, and maintainable With a design-build project, the department has done 10 of these to date, 10, 10 design-build projects. This is our 10th one, and there's a lot of benefits in doing that, and I'm going to just share some of these real quick with you. So, you have NDOT involvement through the design, so our experts meet with the design-builders' experts, they're professionals, to make sure that we get the product that we want. Cost, it's competitively bid. They bring their innovative designs to the table through the procurement process before we select the contractor, and we get to choose who came up with the best ideas and also for the cheapest price. Schedule, on a design-build project, a project that gets done quicker, it helps the end-user in a more quicker timeframe. And this is evident with Ames' proposal. Our engineers' estimate coming into this was that project would take about 18 months to 24 months. Ames came in with a proposal to get it done in 15 months, so it'll actually be done by the end of this year. Accountability, contractor holds us accountable with, to the contract documents we have to hear too, and obviously, we hold them accountable to make sure that we get the quality product that we want for the citizens that we represent. Continuity, the department requires on the design-build projects that they bring the department and their designers into one space, and that's, we're actually here in your building on the third floor, and rather than have phone calls and go meet at, you know, at a different addresses, we get to walk right down the hall and work things out in a continuity and continuous manner. Expertise, like I stated before, their professionals come to the table trying to meet the requirements of our contract documents. Our professionals, we meet at that same table and make sure that we're producing a quality product. And then, communicate, communication. Communication is key to a successful project, and it's key to, to the success of many things. And so, having us together under one roof really helps the project, the project's success. As far as progress goes to date, the contract was let in August, and so, the design is 80% complete construction. They actually started moving earthwork on February fifth, so that's just getting started here at 5%, and then overall schedule, we're 40% complete. We've paid them eight, 8.6, actually 9.1 million dollars to date, so it's just about 14 or 15% of the total contract amount, which is 58 million. Here's a couple of progress photos for you. I assume some of the councilmen and councilwomen have probably been out to the site before. Love's is out there, obviously, some pictures of the freeway. This is the, over there by Republic Services, they set up their staging yard. We've installed all the tortoise fence, have to protect the tortoises before we construct something, and then they put in some watering ponds to keep the dust down out there as they start to move a lot of earthwork. Cost, I've already mentioned. Schedule, we're right there, end of February, and they started construction, like I mentioned, and so, really, the next seven, eight, nine months are going to be exciting out there. You see a lot, two bridges built, five miles of roadway. It's going to be exciting. So, this is kind of the highlight of, of the project, which is reconstructing the existing interchange. They've proposed a great design to do a modified diverging diamond interchange for the state. There's two of those already in place. One of them is in City of Henderson at Horizon Boulevard. The other one is up north, and if you've ever had the chance to drive up to St. George, Utah, there's one on Bluff Street, and also Cedar City, they just put one in the first exit there. I forget the exit name, but maybe, maybe some of you have had the opportunity to experience the diverging diamond interchange, and if you haven't, you will pretty soon. So, some of the benefits is improved safety through the, through the intersection, you reduce conflict points, you actually get rid of the left turn arrow, so the red and green come quicker, and you're able to move traffic more fluently through the intersection, improved frontage road access. The issue that you have out there today is the Las Vegas Boulevard that runs all the way out there is so close to your on-and-off ramps on southbound I-15 and on-and-off that there's a lot of congestion right there. This is going to clean this up, and I have a nice video I'll show you here shortly to show the movement. I think it's here on the next slide. We'll see if it, we'll see if it starts here. What you're seeing there is, is the proposed final configuration, and so, you'll see from northbound I-15, you have a continuous movement through the interchange and directly onto US-93 without any, any stops. Returning back from US-93, you do have one stop right there, and then you're able to continue in through the, through the intersection, and then you have to loop back around to get on the southbound I-15. So, I know it's, I know it's a lot for you to comprehend here, and I'm not going to try and explain every movement. I will say that this video is on the internet if you want to look at it later, and we have some, we have some other highlights of the project on our, on our project website. These are the other intersections that we're working on along 93. This is at the Love's intersection, the bottom, so 93 is currently a one-lane facility in each direction. The proposed project will build two lanes in each direction of 93. What you're seeing close to Love's is a frontage road, and, and that's the swinging, the Las Vegas Boulevard out over into Great Basin Way, and that's the connection point. So, we move it away from I-15 to reduce that conflict point that's out there today. This is a Grand Valley Parkway. Let's see, the, at the top of the screen, the road is going northbound from right to left, and the other direction, going southbound, we're building a bridge above, above Grand Valley Parkway so that your future users of the Apex Power Industrial Park will have direct access right into Grand Valley Parkway without any, without having to yield oncoming traffic. access right into Grand Valley Parkway without having to yield oncoming traffic, because southbound will be going on a bridge up above them. Apex Power Parkway, standard intersection there. So the construction approach, they divided, the contractor divided the work area into two zones, essentially work area one, where the interchange is, and work area two, which is the five miles of roadway along US-93 that's going to be reconstructed. So this is an image, if you imagine sitting out or standing out on 93 at Loves, and you were looking north up to Hyperloop direction, right? So their approach is to build US-93, two lanes in each direction, to the north or to the right, if you were standing out there looking at Hyperloop, to the right side of the existing roadway. And then the existing roadway is going to be used as the frontage road, and to the left of the existing roadway is going to be a drainage channel. This innovative approach allowed the contractor to save time in building this project and get it done sooner. It also minimizes impacts to the traveling public, because they're building the proposed improvements adjacent to the existing improvements, so your conflict with existing traffic then becomes less, and also makes it a safer project. So maintenance of traffic, they sequence the work to reduce construction durations, avoid impacts, our contractors, we put that together, promoted that, and then we're also minimizing lane closures. It's hard to build a project without a little bit of orange cones and a little bit of impact. On I-15, we're always keeping two lanes open the entire time. On US-93, we always keep one lane open in each direction, we will have some flaggers out there, but here's just a slide that describes some of the changes that will happen throughout the duration of the project. So this is a vicinity map, it shows Garnet Interchange, the next closest interchange to the north is where what I call is a local, the Smoke Shop, where I can buy some fireworks from, from the Moappa Tribal Plaza there, and it's five and a half miles, it says 11 miles there, because it's the round trip from Garnet Interchange, and then to the south is Apex Interchange. And so in order to build a new bridge there, we have to demo the existing bridge, so there will be some closures, or we'll have to route traffic to those adjacent interchanges, and we'll keep the stakeholders and the city notified when those dates come. Right now, the contractor is doing mass excavating out there, and so they have a flagging operation basically from Loves all the way up to Apex Power Parkway. This design, as the contractor works on it, requires them to accommodate for future planned projects. Some of those future planned projects that are not part of this project is the 93 truck climbing lane to add a third travel lane in each direction, the US-93 frontage road, add a grade separation in the northbound over Grand Valley Parkway, a signal at Apex Great Basin Way, some ITS improvements, and then also a third lane in each direction. So we're making sure that as they design this, that accommodates for those future efforts. Little bit of aesthetics about the project, and we're almost done with the presentation here, they've already relocated a lot of yucca, and they put them in a nursery there at the project site, and then they'll come back and replant all of that vegetation that they've had to salvage. There's also a lot of cactuses out there that we've had to relocate. This is a picture of the aesthetics on the bridge at I-15. You can see there's four columns on each side, and as those columns go up above the roadway, it recognizes it as Interstate 15. You can see some of the wall form liners under the bridge and the art deco that is used there, and so we're looking forward to having a beautiful project there. So to piggyback on the mayor's address, we've got high-tech hub and innovation out there, diversified economy, transportation mobility, the city of North Las Vegas and Garnet Interchange is progress in motion, and that's kind of piggyback on your State of the Union address there, Mayor. So with that said, again, Ryan Wheeler, project manager, I'll take any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Any comments or questions?
Mayor, Ryan, I am really impressed, that's like far beyond anything that I could have possibly envisioned, you know, for an interchange there. Double diamond, I mean, even the restoration, the preservation of the local fauna. I mean, you guys covered every base I can possibly think of. This is probably one of the most comprehensive NDOT projects that I've ever seen. I'm really, I mean, I drive this all the time, I do some recreational shooting, kind of like in the, not there, but a little bit up the road and around the corner there, okay? And so I drive by here, you know, every chance I get, and I'm really deeply impressed with this. I know what to say, and I'd really aggravate the rest of my poor colleagues here with, you know, what happens in North Las Vegas happens in Ward 1, but you have to admit, when NDOT builds a project, they really build a project, and it's happening in Ward 1. I'm really, I'm impressed, but beyond that, it's going to be a fantastic amenity, leading, I think, this entire area well into the future. It's, as the mayor has to before, you know, this is going, North Las Vegas is going to be a breadbasket, I think, an alternative breadbasket for the entire valley, and this is one heck of a tool that gets there. My sincere commendation to you and the rest of the NDOT staff that's making this happen.
Thank you, councilmen. And next time you're out target shooting, give me a call, and we'll give you a tour of the project.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
I'd like to say something, does anybody else have anything?
I just had a question that you may have stated, but what is the anticipated completion date?
So the anticipated completion date is end of this year, so it's around December 7th or so, and our governor is pretty excited about that, because this is his last year of service, so he's hoping to have one last ribbon cutting before he ends his term, so there you go.
Awesome, thank you.
I think I'll step in for just a second. First and foremost, we can't forget, five years ago, this city was almost out of business, and the council looked at what options it had, and one of the options was is to take the opportunities that we had and start working on them. Where I-15 and 215 intersect, where Apex intersect, these were huge opportunities that one day, if we did the right things, that this city would no longer be a bedroom community of Clark County, it would be a standalone city with a very strong, robust budget. And I met with Director Moffabom and Tracy Larkin-Thomson, Assistant Director, and I sat down with them, and actually Tracy first, then Rudy, and said, "This is going to happen. We're calling this recession off. This is going to happen, we have got to get started on this." And you'd had a washout a little farther up, where people have to go through Panaca, Cedar City, and on around, and the cost-benefit analysis was just worked out great, we were able to move this thing up a little bit, and you know, after sitting on the Traffic Transportation Board for the Legislature, it was good to have those relationships already. But I want to thank those leaders that you work with, they treat everyone as their equals, but they are great leaders, and I want you to know how proud we are in North Las Vegas to be, so their assistance, this city one day will be back to health again. I appreciate you hiring local contractors, it means a lot to us, the residents of North Las Vegas work for these companies, it's a huge benefit to our community to have you do that. The other two things I would say is, it can't go unnoticed, well, three things, is we're in I-15, 215, that system transfer, I mean, roadway will take place, but right now Jennifer's got the first phase of that going in, that 1,100 acres will start us on the right path. But the Speedway traffic, you know, from the Speedway in, you've just widened that road down, you know, from Lamb and everything, you are doing wonderful things for the future, for the next mayor, and the next mayor, and the next mayor will never realize the challenges it could have been had we not done these things, because you do not put money into projects like this, the state doesn't, because if you have $10 in your wallet, you've got 10 more dollars than the state has, because the state does not have a lot of money, but they know this, they don't put money into projects unless they know they're going to be successful, and this is a huge statement for businesses to see this work going on there. And I think the last thing, Ryan, is to say, the communication you guys put out right now is incredible, you know, I can't go anywhere without getting notices in the paper, seeing it up on that little screen board that you guys have, you know? You let people know way in advance what to expect, and in the past, as it was a shock and surprise, all of a sudden a road shut down, and your whole life's shut down for three or four days, you figure out how to get to work another way, you give us plenty of time to understand, to let the community know. I can't applaud you guys more, and I appreciate you, and without you, we wouldn't have a shot at our future, so I thank you so much. I would appreciate if you would take that back to Rudy and to Tracy, and tell them how much they mean to the future of the city, and I appreciate that. And we don't have to, we're just going to thank you for this presentation, maybe as we get closer to September or somewhere, we can see if we're still on track, maybe get an update from you, but even then, it won't be necessary, but if you'd like to come back, you know, and you want to brag about this project, we'd love to have you come back. So thank you very much, thank you for sticking it through with us here tonight, you are definitely one of the best things that we heard tonight on the agenda, appreciate you so much.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor Lee, and also I'd like to just say thank you for hosting the contractor and NDOT here in the third floor, everybody's been very pleasant, want to thank Jennifer Duddy and her staff as we've worked together on some issues on the project as well, been excellent to work with, so thank you, and I'll definitely pass along that sentiment.
We would love that to be a long-term lease someday, if you guys would like to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan. We're now going to receive, oh, go ahead, Catherine.
Item 20, received presentation regarding Apex Infrastructure.
Mr. DeVal.
Mayor and council, Mr. DeVal's making his way up. This is actually a great segue from NDOT, because it puts us right where, still out there in Apex, if that was the best presentation you've heard tonight, we hope this one kind of adds to that. It's also in Ward 1, so Councilman Barone can continue bragging to everyone of everything that's great, it's happening out there. As you remember, that one of the main things that we needed to figure out what to do in North Las Vegas, when we inherited some of the challenges that were inherited, was to grow the tax base, to really find ways that we could solve the revenue challenges of the city, and Apex became a central target that we kind of all focused on. And just a very brief thumbnail sketch, there's been a lot of effort that's gone into solving this, you know, it's almost decades, it's almost been a 20-year challenge since Congress created, Apex is solving the infrastructure challenges out there. So we've approached it, anytime anything came our way, we would take it and look at it like a Rubik's Cube, see if we could solve it, see if there was an opportunity for us to try and figure out a way that this could help us with Apex. In 2014, September of 2014, whenever the state convened a special session to bring Tesla to Nevada, we looked in that law and looked for opportunities of how we could leverage that, find opportunities that we could try and create opportunities for Apex. We had success in doing that, we've gone to the Legislature several different times to find tools to help us as we've attempted to bring infrastructure out to Apex. A lot of questions that we get often, I know you all get it too, is kind of what's happened out there since Faraday, what's life like in Apex after Faraday? One of the things that we wanted to bring to council and also to the public is to help them understand the multi-pronged approach that we have right now for infrastructure out at Apex and some of the excitement that's going out there. Aside from the $58 million that the state is spending out there, and one of the things that that kind of has demonstrated is the investment in belief in the opportunities out of Apex. We see it all the time, but we still have had to try and solve that infrastructure challenge. As Faraday started to have some issues in the fall of 2016, we had legislative priorities going into the session, but what we did is we changed a couple things with the work of Director Adair and Brad Mamer, we worked with GOED to change their Senate bill, SB442, and we specifically worked on 17 different amendments to that bill. We were successful in getting 16 of those changes put into the bill, that bill passed the Legislature and was signed into law by the governor. What that bill really did is it helped us involve landowners more through an SID process as we worked to find solutions to infrastructure out at Apex. Coming out of that session, we knew that the dream of Apex, of bringing a surface water line out there and connecting to a groundwater system, was something that was a great and lofty goal, but it was also something that, because of the magnitude of it, it wasn't really, we weren't really progressing past the vision of it. We weren't able to break it down into chunks that we could actually start implementing, and so we developed, following conversations with some of the city's financial advisors in November, we were able to start putting together a strategy where we took Apex and carved it into a northern and a southern phase. Those phases are not, there's not a Phase 1 or Phase 2, they're both moving concurrently, and since the discussion or the announcement, soft announcement of this proposal during the mayor's State of the City address, it's not the State of the Union, I think it was referred to the State of the Union earlier, Councilman Black and I looked at each other, and it was the State of the City address, sorry, Mayor, but during that address when that was announced, there's been a tremendous amount of activity out at Apex. Just in the last two days, we've had two major companies that have been here on campus that are looking at large projects out there, when I say large, I mean they're both in the 3 million square foot range, and a lot of the interest has now come because of announcing this two-phase project. And what we wanted to do is Director DeVal, who we're now referring to as the Water Master a little bit in City Hall, he's going to describe both of these projects, the proposed elevated storage tank on the north, and then the oversized agreement that we're working on with private parties in the southern phase, and then we'd love to field any questions that you have, but both of these projects are significant in the fact that they're opening up hundreds of acres of land for future development, and this is something that has allowed a lot of these projects that have been talking about coming to North Las Vegas, if you will, they're kind of fish that were circling the bait. Now that we've really baited that hook, we have some great fish on the line that we're kind of reeling in, because they now see what's happened, they're now in different levels of escrow, they've gone hard on property, they're putting real money into this, and we're very excited about the progress that we've seen just in the last month and a half as we've started to really put some teeth into the industrial, or the infrastructure plans out at Apex. So we'll start with just talking about the northern, and then we'll move to the southern phases.
Thank you, Ryan. Mayor, members of council, Randy DeVal, Utilities Director. For the last two years, I have been working very closely with Economic Director Gavin, courting companies, and it's incredible the amount of interest that you have up in Apex. The main problem, however, is there's not any infrastructure, and that's really what's been driving most of these companies away. As City Manager Root Juden said, piecemealing this is the way to go at this point. We're going to be doing something, and I'll start with the, on the map that you've got up there, I will start with the upper left-hand corner, which is a proposed elevated storage tank, it's a red dot directly underneath Las Vegas on your map, proposed elevated storage tank and water line. What this project is going to do is construct a water tank that's going to be about 150 feet tall, right on Route 93, and run a water line down to the existing playa well, which is currently operational, and the city is taking over the operation of it. We're actually providing water right now from that well to Ames Construction for the Garnet Interchange. You will see an agreement with a consultant, hopefully at the next council meeting, that will authorize the design for that project. As we go further down, over to the right, you'll see a blue line called ACCN Water Line by others. What that is, is a two-and-a-half mile-long water line that will connect our existing water storage and pump station, which is shown in red along Grand Central Parkway, to the areas just south of Loves, where the medical marijuana facilities are currently in operation. That will be funded by others, but there will be a refunding agreement that will be put together that City Council will have to approve. You've got two other future wells sites that are 100% designed, they were designed by Southern Nevada Water Authority as part of the larger groundwater system, which is the big loop in red along the upper Apex area. As we need additional water up there, we will drill those wells. there, we will drill those wells and provide that water. Groundwater, we have approximately 1,700 acre-feet of water that we can use in upper Apex, until the surface water line gets there. As we go further south, down on Nadine Peterson Parkway, you'll see an interim central well by others. We're currently working with a company that wants to drill this well for us. It would be a municipal well. We will shift a couple hundred acre-feet of water to this site, and this is a waste-to-energy plant that they want to build there. This well will be big enough so that we can also attract other people into the central Apex area. And then going further south, the beginning, what I call Phase One, of the surface water line, which starts at the Mannheim Auto Auction and proceeds over to just past City View Park area, we're currently working with a developer that has interest in extending water into his property, and we don't want him to just build a water line that can serve his property. So we do want to look, and we are negotiating on an oversizing agreement so that we get the size water line that we want up there. That first phase will actually serve about 620 acres. Most of it will be Miners Mesa and City View on the map here. Both of those areas have, there's been a lot of increased interest in development up there, different types of projects. But again, a lot of them have fallen through because we don't have the water. What I haven't talked about is wastewater. Wastewater, we do have a plan for wastewater in upper Apex. However, we've placed that on hold until we're able to get water up there. Without water, you can't have wastewater. And there are options for wastewater. You can have septic systems, you can have your own package plant, you can have holding tanks for that matter. So our main focus at this point is water. And I do believe that this plan will provide water to both upper Apex and lower Apex, with the ultimate goal that that surface line and the lower Apex will end up serving all of upper Apex in the next few years.
So when are we starting on the northern end? I know that you've been working on that at the pinnacle there. How's that going?
Mayor, we expect to have an agreement before City Council at the next council meeting, authorizing the engineering. The engineering should take six months. Bidding it and construction should take another year. So we're telling potential prospective customers up there that we will have this there within 18 months. This will not only be for new development, but just as important, it'll be for existing development like Hyperloop. Hyperloop currently is borrowing water, leasing it from a power plant, and it's not even potable water.
So this is 400 acres, right? If I remember from an earlier presentation, that's going to quickly start jump-starting that area out there.
That is correct, Mayor.
That is great. Counsel, Councilman Barone, anything?
Director DeValle, actually, I prefer Water ZAR, but Water Master, if it suits you, I guess, you know, I'll get a sign for your door there, too. Well, fantastic. Funding, I guess, funding for all this, can you kind of like just touch a little bit upon where the funding is coming from, just for the public's kind of like benefit?
As we get into the negotiations for the lower Apex water line, I'm working very closely with Mr. Juden and Darren Adair, the Chief Financial Officer, on the funding plan for the city's portion of that project. And until we really come up with an agreement, I don't, I can't really, you know, tell you where all the money's going to come from. As far as the upper Apex, we have $4 million budgeted in this upcoming CIP to build the water tank and the connection to the Playa well. After that, we fully expect the rest of that system to be developed piecemeal by developers that are buying property up there.
Fantastic. And by the way, I still say that Water Tank's going to be a great way to help brand this area. I'm hoping we can take at least a little piece of that and put Water ZAR DeValle's face on it. I thought it'd be just, you know, like a...
But I would, Councilman, I would just indicate, we're going to have at least one, two, three, at least three potential agreements coming before council in the next few months, and hopefully a fourth, which is that private well that they want to drill for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Randy. That's a great eye-opening experience, to be able to tell people when I go in there that we can satisfy their needs now.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. We're just going to accept this presentation from you and ask you to come back a little while and tell us how it's going.
Thank you.
You know, I recognize the State of the Union you mentioned, but I don't want to start the awful practice of tweeting. I don't want to get into that. So let's just stay State of the City.
Item 21, approved construction change order number one with Las Vegas Paving, Inc. to increase construction conflict funds in the amount of $240,000 from Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada Fuel Revenue Indexing Funds to complete construction of the Commerce Street Sawtooth Infill Project, bid number 1487, CIP project number 10388B.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments requested this item? If not, the chair will take the motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 22, authorized issuance of purchase orders in the total amount of $255,190.10, $122,913 to Ford Country, $47,928 to Wired Designs, $76,949.10 to BMW Motorcycles of Las Vegas, and $7,400 for miscellaneous items to be installed by fleet staff using the competitive bidding exception per Interess 332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of four 2018 Ford Explorer Police Interceptors and three 2018 BMW R1200 RTP motorcycles and the associated outfits for the police department.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take the motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 23, award bid number 1526 and approved citywide elevator maintenance service agreement with Cone, Inc., in a total amount not to exceed $250,000, $50,000 annually for a three-year period, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods, to conduct periodic maintenance service on all eight elevators located in four different facilities throughout the city.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take the motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 24, award bid number 1529, an approved construction contract with AMRZ Construction LLC in the amount of $192,300 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund for the ADA Sidewalk Accessibility Fiscal Year 1617 Project, CIP project number 10287-17.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take the motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Orders listed under final action were introduced at the previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item 25, pass and adopt orders number 2868, amending orders number 2680 by modifying the use for Phase Two for the commercial component of the MUD, Mixed Use Development District, ZN 5406 for property located approximately 240 feet west of the southwest corner of Craig Road and Allen Lane, and providing for other matters properly related there, too.
Thank you. If we state your name for the record?
Good evening. Liz Delk with Kemper-Kroll, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant Circle K. If I may, I'd just like to give you a quick overview of our application. I'll keep it quick, and as long as that's okay with you guys.
Yes, please do.
So our application is a request to an amendment to an originally zoned ordinance for a mixed-use development on the corner of Craig and Anne. At the time that it was approved, gas pumps, along with certain other uses, were not permitted in the MUD. So the plan was approved with retail on this portion of the commercial portion of the mixed use. The residential portion is the apartments here, 312 units that have been developed out. In 2011, the ordinance was amended to allow gas pumps and also other uses that were not previously allowed, such as fast food restaurants. So a fast food restaurant did actually go in on this portion of the site. Staff has not seen any concerns with that use, so we have now come in requesting to do a Circle K convenience store with gas pumps. Staff does not see any issues with this use either. We did hold a neighborhood meeting back in November. We had two neighbors show they did not have any issues with the project. We've also received support from a couple of neighbors adjacent to us on either side of the streets here. Planning Commission recommended approval. We did not have any neighbors there as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions from this testifier? Saying no, we'll open up public comment. Ms. Wood?
Anita Wood, 4108 Bowlett Drive, North Las Vegas, Nevada. With all due respect to my dear friends at Kemper-Kroll, I'm here because of my deep concern for this project. This is my own subdivision that this property abuts, Goldcrest, which is a subdivision I've lived in for the past, oh, 23, 24 years here. I was one of the residents who requested the restriction on the gas pumps, and there was a large number of us residents back then. Those residents now are not necessarily within the 500 or 300 feet notice. I certainly didn't get a notice, and yet I've been an active resident campaigning in this area and talking about the various issues. It was from the work that I did protecting these properties that I ran for City Council and was ultimately elected. The concern here is, this is a mixed-use development, and this was supposed to be the shining star, the example of what mixed-use developments would look like in North Las Vegas. The answer to that cannot be a convenience store with gas pumps. Now, there is concern, because this is a mixed-use development, what that basically means is, if this was going in, let's say, next to the CVS, which would be here, or let's say even here, backward abuts residential, you would have a buffer. You would have about 20 feet of landscaping with trees to serve as sound barriers. You'd have a wall. You'd have another 20 feet of landscaping on the side of the residential. You have buffering. You have something that protects the nearby residents from a 24-hour use that sells packaged alcohol. With a mixed-use development, that's not coming in. So you're looking at a 24-hour use coming in with very little, just nothing more than that little street, and no buffering, no sound dampening, no trees, no real landscaping, to protect the residents of this apartment complex from that 24-hour use, which is partially why we asked for no gas pumps there, because we didn't want the 24-hour use. You have to remember that this is an elementary school, oops, sorry. This is an elementary school. There was concern, because normally, as you see at every intersection everywhere, whether you're in North Las Vegas or Vegas, that's normally where you find, at the corner, where you find your convenience stores, as you do right over here, which is, by the way, another convenience store with gas pumps right across here. And just in case you're concerned that they won't have the convenience of the convenience store and would have to cross Craig, you certainly have the CVS here, which also provides pretty much the same grocery elements as any convenience store that you'll find. So we already have gas station here. We have three more at Craig and Decatur. We have numerous ones as you go down Craig Road to get to Simmons and MLK. There isn't a great need for this. I think the impact on the community here is incredibly dangerous with no buffering system contained in the MUD. So they're getting a waiver from that. And having it as close as it is to the school, which was the concern, that kids after school who walk home would be enticed to go in in the convenience store. How often have you gone to a convenience store and you'll see the signs where they're saying no kids without adults allowed in because they do have a tendency to congregate and kids end up over there? So we, the neighbors, did speak up at the time. It was why those conditions were put in, and we would not have been notified because we're just outside of the 300-foot notification range. So my neighbors really don't know that the safety that was put in for them, that they asked for, is today trying to come out. So if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Could you bring that little map down just a little bit where it says Duffy Circle? Well, that's fine. Where Duffy Circle goes up, is that, I don't know if it's to you or to staff, but it looks like this is the same amount of buffer that Duffy Circle got for their cul-de-sac there.
Well, no, because you're seeing, they've got landscaping that would go in here, a wall, landscaping on their side, and then the homes. Over here, you won't really have that because the MUD does not require...
You'll have no wall?
There will be, not as I understand it, unless the changes of the MUD have changed. There will be no wall. There will be no landscaping on the two sides of the wall. So you're looking at a 24-hour use that close to all of those apartments.
Okay.
So, you know, when you're looking at somebody coming in with their boombox or their music too loud at 3:00 in the morning because they want to gas up, that's fine, but now you're impacting all those residents. And again, I don't know how much, I don't know when we send out notification, when it, does it go to the individual apartments, or if it just goes to like the owner of the apartment complex? So again, it may be that the actual individual residents of the apartments may not have been notified.
Thank you very much. Hey, Counsel, any comments? Is there anybody else from the general public? Would you like to rebut? That would be fine, ma'am. Is there anybody else from the general public who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for Liz. So if you look at the map, are the gas pumps oriented on the north, the south side of the Circle K building itself?
So here's our map here, our site plan. This is Craig here. The apartments are south here. The C store is here, and the gas pumps are along Craig here.
So the building, the structure itself for the convenience store would be in between the apartments to the south?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then, in terms of that entryway in the back there, can you, and then the space behind the convenience store, is that parking and/or delivery space, or public parking?
So there's just a few parking spots here.
Okay.
Just in the back. And then the majority of the parking is here. So this would most likely be for the workers who work there.
When you look at a proposed use like this, you know, this has been a vacant piece of land for quite some time. The PDQ Restaurant came in, I think, about three years ago, roughly, and it's been a successful, from what I've observed, and as, you know, a patron of the restaurant, has been a successful venture. When you look at the bare land there, you do have several stakeholders involved. You have the concerned residents, you have the landowner, you have the business, potential business owner, or the investor, developer, you have future employees, and of course, customers. And so all these stakeholders definitely play a role and have a voice. The meeting that was held on the 13th of November, I was not able to attend that meeting, but there were two folks that came, and the lady that came was an employee of the Green Valley Grocery just to the northeast of this property, and she was sent there by her general manager just to get a feel of what was being proposed. So, you know, the gas pump component, the 24-hour component, I understand the concerns, but, you know, the meeting was held, I believe the radius is about 750 feet for the notification. I do know, to Ms. Wood's comment, I do understand that the property owner of the apartment complex was notified, not the individual 300 unit. So that is indeed the case. However, I would like to, if there are any other comments, you know, it's the developers taking the risk to purchase a property, make a development, you know, they're not arbitrarily placing a convenience store on a corner with the hopes that folks will come. They're doing their due diligence, their market research, you know. I think it's crazy that we have gas stations in every corner, but folks build them, they invest, they make the risk, and presumably there's a return on investment, or they wouldn't keep building them. So if there aren't any other comments, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve this item.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel, Marone?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I forgot your name.
Liz.
Ms. Liz. Yeah, I guess to the east, I see that, well, isn't that the way east?
This is east.
Okay. Okay, well, then to the west, I see there's a piece of undeveloped land. What's, are there any future plans for that piece of land?
For this here?
Yes.
Yes, we're planning to do a restaurant here in the future. Not Circle K, obviously, but I think that was in the plans. That's what was noted. That's what, that's what was noted in the staff report.
Okay. Um, what type of restaurant?
I'm not sure. I don't think anyone has any specific plans in place yet. I think it's more of a discussion item right now.
I see, yeah, because it's a very large piece of property. I was kind of like surprised that a convenience store on such a large piece of property, but that kind of like makes sense, where you'd have something else coming in. To the councilwoman's concerns, are there going to be, is there going to be anything like a pony wall or on the, uh, between this development and the residential? Will there be landscaping? Will there be any sort of like a, a wall between them? Trees, landscaping?
This is the back, so the south portion of the convenience store here, where that parking was that I pointed out. So there will be trees here and a detached sidewalk, but there will not be any walls.
Actually, wouldn't there being no walls, doesn't that actually enhance security rather than detract from security? I mean, when you have, like, for instance, more eyes to be able to be available for people who are transiting to and from the site, don't you, isn't it, isn't it a fact that if you have more eyes of people who are there in the condominium, it kind of like actually enhances rather than kind of like gives people, I mean, when you have walls, you have places for people to hide behind.
Right. Yes, people definitely won't be hiding out back here. There will be lights, security cameras, low-level lighting, obviously, as you can see, it's pointing down here, but there won't be anywhere for people to hide, like you mentioned.
To the councilwoman's concern regarding noise, do you have any studies or anything that, that will show that there will be, that the building itself would help to mitigate any sound coming from people who are coming basically in and out of the, the front of that building, say, later at night?
I don't, I don't have any studies on me. I think, though, the, the reason they set it up this way with the gas pumps to the north was that way the traffic circulation is going to be in front instead of back here. I think, as I mentioned earlier, the people who are coming back here really are probably either just coming through the fast food area, or it's just the workers who are at the Circle K.
Okay. And by the way, what, what is the distance between the front pump area and the closest residences?
Well, this is a 30-foot ride of way. Gosh, I don't think there's...
I guess it would have to be kind of like an estimation, right?
There's probably 200 or 300 feet, it looks like, or more. If this is 30 feet, I'd probably 2, 200 to 300.
Thank you so very much.
Sure.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items, and no action will be taken by the counsel at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 26, introduce ordinance number 2875, amending ordinance number 609 by replacing section 060 through 090 of chapter four of title two of missile code. To require introduction of a resolution, and any amendments to such resolution be read aloud to the city council.
Thank you. Moving on to appointments.
Item 27, appointment by Councilman Black, a citizen member to the Library District Board of Trustees, to fill an unexpired term ending June 30 to 2021.
Councilman Black.
Yes, sir. I am very pleased to present to the council for hopefully your approval to appoint Ms. Cynthia Rook to our Library District Board of Trustees. Ms. Rook has been a North Las Vegas resident for over 20 years. She's a retired CCSD educator. She specializes in literacy and reading. She is a fierce advocate for childhood literacy and reading ability. She is also a fierce advocate for public libraries. She's an outspoken person that's not afraid to be a cheerleader for the Friends of the Library District, and I've given her a direct charge to play that role for our library and Friends of the Library District. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Cynthia Rook to the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on, City Manager's Report.
Mayor and Counsel, the majority of my report was kind of in the apex discussion. That was something that we decided to move out of the manager's report and put it onto the agenda, so there could be some discussion on it. That being said, we are going to be having several of those items in that that'll be coming before this, this body over the next few weeks. We're excited about that. In regards to a formal report, our resident historian, Mr. Albert, is going to present what he has told me is going to be seven minutes and 22 seconds long, or was it five minutes and 22 seconds long. He's going to do a little history note on us, and there's lots of twos in here, so it's the second two-year term of our second mayor, and this is part two.
Good evening, Counsel. Jeff Alpert for the record. I am going to time myself, so I don't go over seven minutes. I'll get back to 22 seconds. Last month, I spoke about our second mayor, C.C. McDaniel, and he was born in 1880 and came to North Las Vegas in 1931, and he became our second mayor in 1947 at the age of 67. He was a cars, car salesman, if we can get the overhead on. I had the good fortune last Tuesday of setting up a meeting with Mayor McDaniel's grandson and his wife, Gail and Donna Andres. They're from Nelsa, Nevada, population 40. They met me at the State Museum, and they were kind enough to bring along a lot of family information. I got a lot of pictures from them, learned a lot of articles and a lot of information. This is a picture they had of showing their granddad on the left back in the 30s, how he was a car salesman. By the way, the Andreses are pushing 93 and going strong. And here is a picture of our second mayor, C.C. McDaniel, as you probably looked around the time he became mayor. Last month, I talked about the volunteer fire department and the mayor's battle to disband them and form a permanent fire department. Today, I wanted to start out about his early days with the police department. In November of 1947, so just a little over a year after we became a city, the city's police department ordered new badges. They were very excited. They were six-pointed, gold-plated badges, and they gave out four, because we only had four members of the police department back then. The chief got one, the assistant chief got one, and the two patrolmen got, got a badge each. And looking toward the future, they ordered seven. They had three to put in a drawer, in the drawers, in case they expanded the police department. Back then, the motif was Western. This is a picture in, in the 50s of the second police chief on the left, Chief Parish, and you could almost see his Western outfit, his cowboy hat, his scarf, and the six-sided badge he was wearing. And I just wanted to take a minute to share with you some fun stuff that was in the RJ in January of 1948. They had a recap of events that happened during the holiday season. Title of the article is "Holiday Fun in North Las Vegas: Never a Dull Moment." They outlined four cases the police dealt with right around Christmas. The first one was about a man who was warned twice to go home after imbibing freely, but he liked his liquor too well and was booked by officers when they had to deal with him a third time. He was fined $10. Then there was a man who showed up at the police station to bail out a friend of his who was arrested for speeding, and he couldn't resist the temptation to tell the police captain what he thought about policemen who pinched friends of his. His abusive language and disorderly conduct got him a $25 fine. A third case was a 22-year-old sailor who tried to prove he was tougher than the arresting officers after a disturbance in a bar and was brought into the station. While being booked, he again became unruly and in a scuffle smashed the front window of the police department. He had, had, his bail was set at $50, and he had to replace the cost of the window, Finally, the assistant chief, Bert Weil, recommended exile from the city's barge, bars for one Marjorie Burke, who, after the woman gave him, quote, "the worst cussing out I have ever had, man or woman." Brought before Judge Taylor as a drunk, she was fined $10 and given a 15-day sentence, which was suspended as long as she stayed out of police court. In early 1949, North Las Vegas had a boom in building. In the month of January, the beginning of the year, there were $37 in plumbing permits issued, $53 in electrical permits, $166 in building permits, and $46,000 in housing projects were approved. Mayor McDaniel was able to win a second term in 1949 easily, because he was doing a good job, and this shows the swearing-in ceremony of the councilman and the mayor, who's the fourth one, the shortest guy there in 1949. The next month, the city signed a pretty important agreement plan. This was the first time that North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, and the Air Force Base signed a mutual agreement to help each other and aid each other in the event of emergencies. So for fire protection, they agreed to help each other. Mayor McDaniel was a very big supporter of El Dorado Days, which started in the 30s. Here's a picture of him dressed up in Western motif, and he participated in almost every event. He was a big fan of horses, and he's in the white shirt there inside the carriage being pulled by horses. Mayor McDaniel's accomplishments in his first, in his four years as mayor, he helped pave streets and improve our roads, he worked on water system improvements, he set up and approved and supported the first recreational center the city ever had, he's responsible for the organization of the Boys and Girls Club in North Las Vegas. And, very important, in 1950-51, he was proud to announce that we went from a debt to a surplus. In 1951, there were very few cities in the United States that could say they had a surplus. He decided not to run in 1951. He went on and tried to become a county commissioner, but didn't win. He went back to his real estate business and his car sales business. Here's a picture in 1951 of him, of him selling one of his pliments at his showroom, and here was his business card showing he was a dealer. And then he did become chairman of the board of the local Salvation Army in our area, and it was in 1972. He retired from all his businesses in '59, and in 1972, he passed away at the age of 92. Thank you very much. Seven minutes are up.
It's always enjoyable to see our past, our history.
By the way, I take it he's the gentleman for whom McDaniel Avenue, is his name?
Yes, exactly. Just like the other important people of our city.
Taylor, I saw there. That's got to be Taylor Street over here?
McDaniel became Civic Center. When I grew up, it was called McDaniel Street, then it became Civic Center, too. You know the McDaniel there. Ms. Sharon Lee, please come forward. We are going into our public forum on the second, second public forum. Thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Mayor, and all the councilwomen, councilmen, and manager, city manager, and all the public, citizens of North Las Vegas. Again, my name is Sharon Lee. I have been citizen of North Las Vegas for 10 years. Would you believe that? 10 years? Yes. Well, I, I am more concerned about community safety. I had a encounter, the challenge of a North Las Vegas Police Department. The North Las Vegas Police Department is the most nicest police office. I, I believe that, because I have a few events that happen. They respond so quickly, so it solved the problem. But I have never dealt with the police department. This challenge is about February 13. My brother, Albert Lee, is missing and lost. I had to make a police report. At the same day, I called police. They responded very quick, within two hours, because it's non-emergency. They came, it's a police officer, Edward and Simpson. They came, they say, oh, yeah, they understand, and they, they walk away. And, and the second time, the second day, it's still not show up, so I still called the police, Department of North Las Vegas. And, and they, they say, we will send the police officer over here. So they did. So, and there was nothing then. Of course, I was waiting for my brother to come home, and there's nothing, and my door is not locked, unlocked for all the time, and I was waiting for, and then finally, the second day, I think it's on February 14. So I make all the officially police reports. Again, Officer Simpson and Officer Edward came to make a, to do the report. And they are very responsible police officers. They came around again, 5:30 in the morning, knock on my door. I thought it was my brother came back, but wasn't. It was police officer asked his picture. So I gave it to him, the picture, and then again, I call again. And then what happened, they said, this case has been assigned to the detective, so we have nothing to do with anymore. And, and then from there on, I call every single day for the detective which has assigned this project. And then I had them make all the, the detect, this is the detective, I don't know if you could...
No, just keep going.
And it was like, it was a case number, and, and everything has been assigned, but they never returned, I mean, whoever, he never returned my call. And, and it's been how many days? From, from February 14 now is, today's 21st, right? At this time, it's almost seven days. I have not heard from detective, okay? I have not heard from, 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 from him. I call every single day. I left a message. I called the police office. I went to 3755 Washburn address to see if I would be able to talk to in person. Of course, their facility is not for public, but one time, and I've, I wish, you know, I was, I was there anyway, so a few times. But anyway, let's talk about the safety. But this is, right now, it's a life and death issue, because the sooner we find, the sooner we find my brother, the, his survival chance will be bigger. And what happened is, right now, he is, I have no response from the police officer.
Ms. Lee, I, I think we recognize that you're needing to get some response from our police department.
Oh.
And we have our city attorney right there, who works with the police all the time. Maybe after this meeting, we, she could get a copy of that. We will get a response to you tomorrow. I, obviously, he hasn't come home yet, and he is missing. Do you have any idea? I shouldn't ask, but could he have just traveled somewhere, or is this, just...
No. He has no, can, can I just, because I did this press release already, so this is not, is a public information about missing person. Can I, can I...
Yeah, but we have a professional that can help you. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and I talked to the mayor office today. I know that Amanda was mentioning that to me. One of us, you know, Aaron Batty, whatever, and he should be in this council meeting also, too. I don't know if I will be, I'm able to see him after the meeting. And of course, I'm concerned about community safety, but I am so proud of to be North Las Vegas resident of 10 years, and I think North Las Vegas was a great city to live with. And then just now, I'm just faced, I'm just challenged, face challenged about that safety.
We, we, we will immediately make, let me shut this meeting down, and our city attorney will meet with you, and we will get on this for you tomorrow. I mean, you'll get, maybe even tonight, for all I know, I don't know. Okay? But we'll get on this for you, okay? even tonight, for all I know, I don't know. Okay? But we'll get on this for you, okay?
Thank you so much, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just have an opportunity, just post the picture very quick?
Yes, you might. Yes.
Okay, can I?
Would you like?
Yes. Yeah, that's him.
Okay.
53 years old.
We will do, do our best.
Thank you, same, mayor. Thank you.
What's his name, Ms. Lee?
Albert Lee or Shiyan Lee. He was the police military before, in Taiwan. So I believe he has trained to be certain degree of self-defense. So I, I, I believe, I believe, I just, I just so sad about his missing. I don't like even can...
You don't even have to leave. I'm going to shut this meeting down, and she's going to come right to you. Okay?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that needs to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close this.